You're listening to Earnestly Speaking, the only weekly podcast that covers friends, foes, and anything that goes. And now for your badass host, Ernest Owens. And we're back with another episode of Earnestly Speaking with your host, Ernest Owens, myself. Well, we are officially in spring, but not really. I mean, I feel like, yes, we're in spring, but the weather is becoming really wintery. And it's so weird because last week, when I guess spring was officially kicking off, you know, everything was feeling good, the weather was nice, you know? You know, I debuted a new gelato flavor that sold out because all of you all were standing over there at Cloud Cups in Kensington, which was a super success. Shout to that black owned gelato shop over there. They've had a tremendous week. Many people have gone over there to, you know, really try their first ever flagship location, where of course they have thirty-six different flavors. And my Irish Cookies and Cream flavor, which is basically Bailey's Irish, you know, coffee whiskey liqueur mixed with Oreos. And it's really, really creamy, sweet gelato. And it was a smash hit. And it was just in time for St. Patrick's Day, which the flavor, you know, just cleared the shelves. So so many of y'all got to try it, some of y'all didn't. You know, Dr. Parks and Mr. Joe, you know, I was able to save them a pint because, you know, this is the perks of being a neighbor. So they got to try it. And they, and it was funny because my homegirl, Amanda, she was like, she was eating, she was like, she was trying to play like, oh, you know, I'll eat it later. And then she got some and she was like, oh, you know, you know, it was, it was giving Talentini quality, okay? Even more than Talentini, it was, it was given that level of supreme. So for those who are, who, you know, a lot of my friends from Penn that left Philly, let me tell you how good this place is. So for those who remember Capajiro, that was right there on Thirty-Ninth and Walnut, which was like, at one point in time, a beautiful oasis of like, great culinary gems. You know, we had Jimmy John's, we had City Tap House, we had Bobby's Burger Palace. You know, none of those places exist anymore. R.I.P. Like, everything I just named, they don't exist on Thirty-Ninth Street, on that strip. What is there is Sweetgreen is still there. Bobby's Burger Palace got replaced by Raisin Canes, which is okay. As a Houston, Houstonian, you know, this is, it don't taste the same as Houston. And I wish, my only complaint about, I like Raisin Canes, I don't really like the way Philly's been making the strips because I feel like they're not as crispy. They got this soggy-ness to them, and I don't know if they know how to fry, or they're just using Pennsylvania ingredients, but something's off about it in Philly. They don't have barbecue sauce at any locations. Everything is like that raisin Cajun sauce, which I don't really like sauces like that because I know, like, I don't know, anybody who's close to me know, I hate, I don't really like condiments on food. Like, I like hot sauce, but that's, you know, that's a necessity. I like barbecue sauce, but like, I'm not, I don't like mustard, I like ketchup, I don't like relish, I like tartar sauce, cocktail sauce sometimes, but I don't need it. And I always say this on the podcast, I feel like, you know, for those who've listened to multiple episodes, it's been over a hundred and, what, a hundred and fifty episodes I've recorded, a hundred and seventy-five plus? But like, I always say that if you at a good place with good quality food seasoned well, you don't really need the sauce. Now, sometimes it's just almost like a given. Like, if you got a really good golden fried chicken, you could eat it by itself seasoned well, okay? And there's some really good chicken where I don't even need the hot sauce. But I just feel like, I grew up and a Louisiana hot sauce is just ideal. Fried fish, you know, I always want some good hot sauce for some good fried fish. That's just how I grew up. So I love that. Like, if I have some good chicken strips, I would love for some good hickory smoked barbecue sauce. Like, that just makes sense to me, you have to have dipping sauce. But, you know, a good burger, a good steak, like, no egg one sauce on a steak. If you, if you have to put egg one sauce on a steak, number one, you're probably not eating it medium or higher. Like, I like my steak medium or medium rare, that's what we do. If you're eating a steak past that, you're eating a hockey puck, or you're eating ground beef, or you're eating, I don't know, but you're not eating steak in my book, if you go on over medium. So that means medium well, well done, baby, it's, it's not steak anymore, it's something else. It's, it's beef Wellington, I don't know, it's not steak. And even beef Wellington isn't cooked well done, it shouldn't be. So I don't know, I don't know what you're eating at that point. But I, I just don't like condiments. But my thing is, is that if you're gonna have a place that's all about chicken, like, only chicken, you gotta have some alternative sauces outside of nasty ass honey mustard and whatever that random Cajun, Cajun, Raisin, crazy and stuff, like, ew, like, ugh. Like, give people what they really want, anyway. So, so what has left? What is, what has left, what also left? So they replaced the Jimmy John's with this Asian spot, like, like a Japanese, no, it's a Japanese type of spot. Haven't been there, I guess it's okay. Capajiro location got replaced with Ann Pizza. They haven't done anything upstairs at, at City, City Tap House. Sweetgreen is still there, because, I mean, why not? Chipotle is still there. McDonald's is gone, but hummus is still there. Shocker, but not shocker, because hummus has always been good. Greek Lady is still there, Hip City Veg is still there, that Cordoba is still there. Saks Bees is now, is that Saks Bees? I can't recall. I think it is Saks Bees. Saks Bees had a facelift, but I think it's still there. I don't know, I don't drink coffee, I could be wrong. Pataia left that location right next to, right next to New Delhi. New Delhi is still there. Pataia is still around, baby, but it's on Locust, because I guess they couldn't take the competition. But I don't know if they're still selling liquor. I went to the reopening, the food is still good, but they did not, I think they were, don't do liquor, but they weren't acting like they were doing BYOB. I couldn't put my finger on it. But I haven't been in a while, I always order carryout and takeout, I never go and sit down. But when they used to have it, the Happy Hour used to be lit with the Thai chili wings, but I don't know if they've still got liquor, they got liquor license. They might have, it's been over a year since they relocated, so I need to check it out in person. What else? Okay, so the place that used to have Marathon Grill, then Harvest, is now Panera Bread. And it looks like that Panera Bread, in spite of the controversy with that caffeinated little drink they had, is here to stay. The upstairs area is popping, people go up to study, the Penn students do. I always go there, because when I go to the movies and Cinemark, I always want to give me a quick little bite. And that Panera Bread is right there, because McDonald's across the street is not open. It's shut down, I don't know what they're doing there. The Fresh Grocer is now Acme. So as you can see, there are some things that have stayed and some things have not stayed. Tandoor, that Indian spot, is no longer called Tandoor, it's called Itaka or whatever it's called, but that's been named that for many years. Papa John's is still over there, racist ass owner, we don't go to Papa John's. That little strip got Dunkin' Donuts, Zesto's Pizza, this Euro Euro situation, but they keep trying to figure out what they trying to do. And that's pretty much the heart area. The Strito was gone, let me just get that out the way, the Strito was gone. But like I said, New Delhi is still strong. There's a Jamaican restaurant called Erie Lounge or something, that's right across the street, and that is not too bad. DP Dough is gone, I believe the Pizza Hut that was trying to compete, I think that's gone. It might be open, but really no one goes over there anymore like that. Everybody's on the other side, where they do have this Jamaican restaurant that does have a liquor license, and the food is pretty good. The Green Line Cafe, I think is still there. And there's a couple of other spots. That Crown Chicken is still on the forty of Forty Street. Nally's Lounge across the street is not there. They trying to mess with those UC Town Homes, that's the update for all of my Quakers and folks that are coming to, to, you know, ten year reunion and like, trying to figure it out. Cap, what's the place, Cobble Banana? I think they're open, I don't know if they are, what's going over there, but no one really goes over anymore. Allegro's is open, I haven't had the pizza in, in God knows how long. That little area is kind of shuttery, it's not popping over there, there's nothing popping in that area, y'all know what I'm talking about over there. It's kind of like dead. I don't know if anyone goes to Cobble Banana, I don't know if it's still open, it's been weird times and stuff, it's not lively. I think it's gone. And that, and that little subway that used to be there is also gone, by the way. But what's going? Oh, yes, they replaced my favorite, one of my favorite places, I used to have my parties at, Beijing. Beijing got replaced for Five Guys. That Wawa is still over there, there's a couple of random shops, but that, that Five Guys over there is actually pretty good. I've went two times and I find them fast, efficient, and chill. But I do miss my Beijing, though. R.I.P. to Beijing, they used to do really good Chi, cheap BYO, cheap Chinese BYOB, one of the only places Chinese restaurants I liked in Philly, because it had the traditional Chinese food I grew up eating in Houston, and it wasn't super fancy, it did what it needed to do, and I loved it. So, you know, a certain Dr. Parks used to judge me when I was in college for going there. But if you all knew how she used to eat, how she used to eat Chipotle, and leftover Chipotle, how she found out how to navigate that, when for me, it was only one sudden, and I never ate Chipotle like that anyway. But for her to judge me and my support of diverse cuisine and local small businesses, when she was supporting corporate giants and monsters, you know, it's just very telling. You know, I never was at Starbucks, let me just say, I never used to drink at Starbucks. I mean, she don't go there now, but I've been boycotting, you know, Starbucks, because, you know, I just always found it to be a problem. But you know, you know, you know, people, people be, you know, making judgments. I've been right on a lot of things, you know? It may take me some time, but like Drake, like Starbucks, like Chipotle and all that, I mean, no shade Chipotle, Chipotle, I guess it's cute, but people tired of Chipotle. I'm, you know, like, I went to Chipotle this weekend, because I was with a group, and that was the one place we can find a consensus on. And they got this nasty ass Al Pastor chicken. First of all, Al Pastor chicken is oxymoronic. Al Pastor is pork, that's how you season it, you can't do it with chicken. So they put the Al Pastor flavor on this chicken thing, and it's disgusting. And it says for a limited time only, and I said, that's smart, because it was disgusting. I was not a fan. I don't know why they did that, because the regular chicken is okay. I prefer the carne asada, sometimes I get the barbacoa, depending on my mood, but I kept it cute, I did the tacos, I mean, the bowls is just too much. But you know, ain't nothing really changed about Chipotle, they keep trying to remix new little recipes and stuff, but it seems like it's just up and down over there, like, they're so freaks, they tried to do a vegan thing, but people just, listen, the vegans know what to get, you get the pinto and black bean mixed with the brown rice or the white rice, okay? That's enough for the vegans, you don't need to try to make a special soy thing, they just, whatever. And then the guac thing in the East Coast is too much. But anyway, I digress. I say all this to say that for those who remember Capajiro, this, this Cloud Cups is, to me, that vibe, that feeling. It is really great flavors, a little bit more on the American side twist rather than the Italian twist, so they're not having that many exotic flavors. There are fun, cool flavors, but like, Capajiro, you said, what I loved about them was they was always very super seasonal, and they would have these really exotic, like, you know, like, like fruit flavors and things, and they would put the ingredients in it. I mean, very upscale. Cloud Cups is good, though. Like, their gelato flavors are really good, they're made with premium products, but they're more on the sweet side than the fruity, they do got some good fruity flavors, they have some good ones, passion fruit, all these great flavors, but they also have a lot of fun fruit flavors, they have an Apple Jack's flavor, a cinnamon toast crunch, but they play with some fruity Pebbles flavor, they play with some different types of ingredients. So it is more on the fruit side, not the fruit side, the more sweeter side, the candy is side, but they do have some good fruit flavors, they got vegan options, they have all types of non-dairy, dairy-free options, all that good stuff. So please check them out, and you can also sidebar, because, you know, I love to support black owned businesses, they also sell their product Uber Eats and DoorDash. So put in Cloud Cups, now this is for Philadelphians and people nearby Philly, in the suburbs, put in Cloud Cups and you can get pints of it. And they also ship nationwide, but you have to get like, big old cases for my folks that live outside the greater Philadelphia area. But they're a great place, I tried all of their flavors, love those owners, super dope. So other cool things going on. So I have a new, I'm, I'm making a national television appearance on this cool show on TV One called For My Man. It is a long time series, a crime series that's on TV One. TV One's a black owned channel, and it's on cable, if you can find it, but they also stream the episode, so when the episode drops and I find a streaming link, I will share it to you all on my Instagram page when I show it. If you, if you don't get it in the D R, you don't have it on your cable outlet, whatever the case. But I am on this special episode, it's gonna be big deal, I'm excited, because, you know, I love being on TV. And so one of my dreams have always been that, I've always wanted to do like, one of these like, crime shows, where they interview a journalist, and, you know, the journalist is talking throughout the show and having that, I've always dreamed to do something like this, and this is like, my first time doing it. So that's why I'm personally excited. And a lot of people watch For My Man, it's like a very popular show. So For My Man basically is a show in which, it's very black, it's ripped from the headlines, all of these episodes are true crime stories. And basically, it censors a woman, normally the woman in question as being like, the focal of the story typically is a good girl turned bad. It's like a, it's like a Bonnie and Clyde story, like, this is a woman who has good intentions, means well, falls in love with the wrong type of dude, and she's a ride or die for her man in spite of whatever's going on. And so this episode is a, is a very known Philadelphia crime that happened many years ago, and, and not too, too long ago, but a couple of years ago, and they brought Philly journalists in to talk about this case and, and what went down. It was super fun, I actually filmed this episode like, in the fall, like, they do these episodes and edit. So I look a little different, you know, compared to how I look now, you know? I, I definitely was, you know, you know, more fuller in the face and things, because I looked at the pictures, I was like, wow, wow, you know? But, you know, look, I look good, I always look good. I, I feel like Oprah, even though I saw that Oprah special, you know? Do your thing, Miss O, Queen O, I'm never gonna, I, I, I just, that's, that's, I stand for Oprah, I know people got their opinions, but you know, everybody got their one, people is untouchable, the way y'all go for Beyonce, y'all can do that, that's fine, that's your prerogative. But I feel like Oprah is the one, that's the one to be, not comparing queens, I'm just saying, like, the way people be like, you know, you don't wanna hear nothing bad about your little faves, whatever, even though your fave be making it hard for you to defend them, I would say Oprah, I find her to be the one for me, like, that's my person, I don't care what you think about her, I don't care what you think about her doing those big, it's her body, it's her choice, look, she didn't do weight washing, did everything, you got choices with Oprah, okay? I enjoy Oprah in all her shapes, all her hairdos, all her, her decades, I love Oprah, who she is, whatever she want to do for herself, I'm gonna love her regardless, I'm gonna stick beside her regardless, okay? And I saw her special, and I thought it was informative, I thought it was a great conversation. If anybody know how to talk about weight and, and publicizing it, Oprah has lived that life, Oprah has lived that life her entire career, she's always, her way has always been a center of conversation, and she has always not backed away from addressing it. And even when people was talking about what she recently done, she came up, she gonna take, she's gonna take control of her narrative, that's one thing I've learned from her in my time meeting her, the wisdom that she bestowed upon me, she told me a lot of things that I haven't shared. But when I had that moment with her, when I had that, that, that time, I, I just soaked up so much, and she was so giving, and, and just, it has changed my life, it's, it's changed the way I view how I contribute to the world, my career, and she's very consistent, because I will look at interviews when I would hear her talk and give advice, and she's very consistent. So I, I just, Oprah is always gonna be, you know, my ultimate fave, and it's just nothing like seeing your fave, like, it just changes everything. Like, my screen photo on my phone, it opens up with my husband and I, Mr. Johnson's wedding photo, one of our favorite wedding pictures that we took. And then when you unlock the phone, my screensaver is a picture of me and Oprah in L.A., when, you know, I got flewed out to interview and had the, the opportunity of a lifetime. So, you know, it, it, I'm just, you know, every time I sometimes get annoyed, or with the world, I'm, I'm just, you know, over certain things, I've always reminded that my fave, that's pretty much a lot of people's fave, or somebody that they not gonna try, told me to keep going. And, and I am fortunate to have someone like that, that like, literally, the number one person I've always wanted to meet, the number one person that I stand for and just love and just really think is awesome, that person saw me, you know, sent me, it's been, this year would mark five years when that happened in the summer, five years. That, you know, the summer of nineteen was just a game, I feel like everything that happened to me in fours, the year of a four number, like, four and nineteen. Like, any nines and fours in my life has always been paramount, like, myself and Mr. Johnson, we got, you know, we got, we got married, you know, no, I'm sorry, we got, we got together as a couple in twenty fourteen. He proposed to me in twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, I got, got signed to my book agent, got accepted to a master's program, got flewed out to L.A. to meet Oprah. So twenty fourteen, I got graduated, got my Ivy degree, got my boyfriend, Dan, who will be my soon to be husband, and started my career, like, really launched my, and got into like, you know, went to B T Awards, all of that in L.A. Like, it's just like, for, like, that always is interesting to me, like, the years and things. I've always just noticed that. So this year is a year, like, some stuff is about to happen. You know, just saying, like, some stuff is about to happen, this, this year just feels even special. Like, one, it's a ten year anniversary of my relationship, my ten year reunion, but also my five year reunion with Oprah, how that changed my life. And then also just some other stuff that's about to happen. So that, that, you know, I've just been thinking about that lately, like, how those things connect. So it's been five years, and, oh, I got on Forbes thirty and thirty in twenty nineteen, like, damn, twenty nineteen was that year, okay, what's, what's good twenty fourteen, what we doing? What we got coming for twenty fourteen? Because like, it's, it's just, I just, I always, numbers in my life, I'm just, I just always see patterns. There's another pattern I'm gonna share, like, yeah, I'm just, we'll get there, and just, we'll, we'll get there. So, yeah, that was super dope, so definitely excited about this show For My Man, definitely check it out. I also want to do a little shout out, this week, I was on a really great episode, my lit brother, Dr. Gio, has a podcast of his own called Table Eighty-Six. Now, his, he'll tell you, he says on the show, like, he doesn't do the weekly thing, like, he's very episodic, very periodical with his episodes, you know, I just, I don't know how I give y'all a week every week, sometimes I'd be like, damn, I really am committed to this, people be like, damn, you really committed, like, they know, because it's like, coffee in the morning for some people on Monday morning, like, some of y'all be feening for an episode of Earnestly Speaking, and I get it, and I love to deliver. But a lot of, you know, it's been a lot of, you know, I, I just feel like, you know, if I can do it, I'm gonna do it, so they were love, I get excited. For me, it's like talking, like, talking to you all, like, it's like a conversation, like, I'm talking to people, like, you know, you're talking, you're, 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 you're like, no, I'm talking to my thousands of subscribers, hundreds of listeners, that's who I'm listening, talking to, and you all engaged, like, you are into it, and so I'm into it too, in spite of everything. Like, I had norovirus like, a couple of weeks ago, and I was, still gave y'all a podcast episode. You'll be surprised where I've been recording these podcasts, I won't tell y'all, but there's been some times where I brought the mic and the laptop and the, and I was some places, I, listen, you'd be surprised where I record this podcast at, but I'm committed to consistency, because that's something I learned from Oprah, that's something I learned from just other mentors in the industry, but consistency is key, like, if you want to build a loyal following, if you want to build a reputation, you gotta have rigor, you gotta have consistency. And then my entire career, one thing about me, I've been one consistent motherfucker, I have been consistent, like, I started doing this years ago, and my best friends know, when I did Earnestly Speaking, the radio show, I did that show at WQ, WQHS Radio, every Friday night, Saturday night, whenever I had my seasons, okay? I did that show for nine seasons, because I even did a summer season when I was, when I was in Philly for the summer, my, I think my sophomore year, but I, I did that show from my freshman year to the end of my senior year, and I never skipped an episode, okay? Every Saturday night from eight to ten, I was there. I would do the show, and I would leave and go to the party, and it was a ready, it was a show that people listened to when they would get dressed. And I, my first special guest on that show was Nina Dominique, which is one of my best friends, her name is Nina Blalock, but she used to come on my show, she was the first on my show, the first episode, that's when people realized, oh, this show gonna be fine. Now, let me be clear, this show has evolved, okay? Because Earnestly Speaking, when I was on college campus, is not the Earnestly Speaking that, that people listen to now. Earnestly Speaking, okay, in my college years, was the equivalent of the Wendy Williams Show for Penn's campus, not gonna hold you, not gonna lie, the T was, not even Penn's campus, let me back up, it was for anybody who was on a campus in Philly. That show went from Temple to Drexel to LaSalle to Villanova, I had the college scene on lock, it was the black college show in Philly, okay? We, that's how much pool this show had, okay? I'm gonna talk my shit, because I've been doing this for how many years? Fourteen years! And I'm thirty-two, baby, child star, I was doing this for a minute. So I, sometimes people will, will, will try to play me because I'm young and the industry's conception, so they'll be like, oh, you new, I'm like, hmm, look, I've been prepared for this. Ben had a column, Ben writing opinion pieces, was writing a weekly column for like, three years, weekly, every Friday, had a, had a column out Friday, had a radio show on Saturday, and, and look at my life today, got pieces of columns, writing every week, got a radio show I do for W R D Radio every Thursday, got a podcast coming out every Monday, consistency. So when people be asking me, like, young people listen to my show, be like, how do you do it, what's the tips and advice? Consistency, and let me tell you something, back then, when I did that work, I wasn't getting paid, I was just getting exposure, I was practicing who I was gonna become. I used to say, you know, I used to have flyers that would say, Ernest Media Empire, people would laugh and clown and tease, my company is called Ernest Media Empire LLC, okay? It's a business, I have a business, it was, that was the name. I remember it very well, looking back, because somebody had said, what was it? You know, okay, anybody who's seen the movie Shadown Compton, and at the end of Shadown Compton, Dr. Dre's character, the guy asks him, what are you gonna name the, the record label? He says Aftermath. And that was a response to Death Row, because it was the aftermath of what went down with Death Row and why he left. So he called it Aftermath at the end, and I will never forget, what was it, twenty, twenty eighteen? When I got my company incorporated, got it all, you know, got all the things and the papers and everything. I'll never forget, my attorney said to me, what are you gonna name your company? You cannot call it Ernest Owens LLC, you have to call it something different. And I turned around and said, Ernest Media Empire, and he looked at me and said, wow, I like that. That was because in two thousand and twelve, I started to call all the things I was doing, Ernest Media Empire. It was like, I, I had a, a, a Facebook page, and I called it that right after I met Ariana Huffington, and she gave me an opportunity of a lifetime, the right, so I met many media moguls before Oprah, but Oprah, of course, is my favorite. But from there, I was doing TV, radio, all this stuff, and I just spoke my name, I spoke it into existence, and I remember I had a cute little lounge party, made some sweatshirts, some sweaters, like, I was into branding, I had buttons for my radio show, I made commercials, like, I believed in it, and I was just telling a bunch of kids this, I went to speak to some college kids, actually, at Temple early this week, and one of the things I gave them as advice, and it came out of me, like, I didn't even know what I was gonna tell them, but I just said, take what you do seriously before anybody else do. That was my advice, and it's still my advice to this day to anybody that wants to hustle, that wants to see themselves, get something, take what you do seriously before anybody else. If you're waiting for anybody else to validate your dreams, or what you want to do before you do, you're doing it wrong, baby. You gotta be the one that go hard for what you do, stand for what you do, take what you do seriously before anyone else do, and get you some good ass friends who will rock out and ride with your shit just as much as you do. Because I have, all of my friends, I still have from college to then, they believed in me, they, they was cheering me on, I was cheering them on, I supported all of them. We've been calling Dr. Parks, Dr. Parks, in research for ten years, this woman now has her doctorate, all of my friends that went out to be teachers and educators and nurse practitioners, we all spoke these things, they spoke my, what I have now, they spoke that into my existence. Even when people around me used to laugh and, and, and mock and act like, oh, you ain't gonna do that, or, is he crazy, why he doing this? They rocked with it, because sometimes when you that damn crazy and press about your shit, there's something in you that means it's gonna go, and I never buckled down, I always had that level of confidence about my work. I would sometimes have more confidence in my talent and my work than I had about my own personal self. It is crazy, but I just knew, this shit is going somewhere, I got something to say, and it's gonna land, and, and in spite of all the things that was supposed to tell me, no. It was not easy on this journey, but I was consisting like- It was not easy on this journey, but I was consisting like, this is, there's something here, and I'm gonna pour myself into it. And I always told myself that if there was always another opportunity, another ladder to keep going, if it was, whether it was Arianna Huffington in twenty twelve, or Oprah in, in twenty nineteen. Notice there's a seven year gap. The number seven in my life is crazy, but no matter all the challenges, I always knew to do it. So if you have that thing in you, for real, for real, that just keeps telling you to do it. There's always a lifeline or a reminder. Every time you feel like it's ready, it's time to go. There's always this weird little thing that will happen, whether it was an award or some opportunity. And I'm like, wow, just when I was ready to put it aside, something just said, no, keep doing this. And so that is, you know, take it, take whatever you can out there, but take what you do seriously before you get anyone to validate it. There's too many people out here that's like, oh, well, if, you know, if I don't get this co-sign, uh, you waited for someone else to validate. If you can't be your biggest spokesperson for your shit, how do you expect anybody else to? I just, I, I just believe that if it's something you want, you need to be the expert and a lead on that thing. And then everybody else can, you know, be your cheerleaders and motivation. But the gag is, they can't cheerlead you and motivate you if you ain't giving them the confidence and the fortitude to believe in it. There's people I know that's not, let me be clear, my friends, but people I know out here who be wanting me, oh, can you write this article? Can you do this? You know, cause if I had your article, you know, then I, then I'm gonna feel, like, I, I don't, that, I'm not here to validate. I'm here to amplify. I'm not here to give you, you know, whoever the person, like, in my world, world as a journalist, let me be clear. This podcast can motivate, let me be clear about that. But I, as a journalist, I tell some people who come to me and pitch to me, I shouldn't be the thing that solidifies you. And let me be clear about that. Like, I do, I do make stars. I do help. I've written articles about people and made people infamous or famous. I've helped to a certain extent. But what I mean is, is that you have to have the confidence within you to feel like your stuff is good, your restaurant is good, your food is popping, your stuff is good. And I should only be the one to amplify that confidence that you radiate. If you don't radiate that, then it's gonna be hard for me as a storyteller, as a journalist, reporting, to convey it. Cause if I don't feel it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do it. I'm not, I just, and I'm, behind the scenes, y'all, I would tell you, there are some people who've come to me, and I was like, oh, I'm feeling you, you know, I like what you got. But their confidence, their heart, their vibe wasn't the right place. And I was like, ah, these quotes are kinda whack. Your responses are not good. I don't feel the momentum and energy. Come back. And some people have come back, like, a year later, two years later, or took some time, got theyself together, got their life right, then came back. And it was a different energy, and I was like, okay, you ready, let's go, right? And then some people just didn't. And then the crazy thing was that when whatever they were doing failed or flopped shortly after, I wasn't surprised because I felt like they weren't doing it for the right reasons. So, I say all this to say, do your thing, live your truth, make it happen. But anyway, I digress. I just feel, I'm jittery, y'all. I'm a little excited about some things. But anyway, I, I say all this to say that I went on my bestie, my lit brother, Dr. Jill's show, his podcast, Table Eighty Six, which is on all the major streaming platforms. Please tune in. Um, it's super dope. Um, so I was on as the season three premiere guest. He's done this for three seasons. You can go back and listen to the episodes, or you can just go to episode three. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, season three premiere, and listen to our interview. It's a one hour interview. I talk about my favorite restaurants, but I talk about my food journalism journey, which oftentimes do not get talked about enough, cause people think it started last year when I got at Eater. But it, it hasn't been. This has been a journey that's been going on for, it's really been a ten year journey, actually, because my then boyfriend, my now husband, food was our love language. And before we was going out to restaurants, getting these VIP invitations and all that, I was that, we would just go on dates. We would just go on dates, and we used to, I used to make reservations through OpenTable. This is before there was, what, Toc and Resi and taking all these other apps and stuff. It was just OpenTable. And OpenTable still exists, and I still use it. And I'm an OpenTable VIP. I have thousands of, thousands of points. But I've been having that account for like ten years now, and we used to make reservations, go out to eat. And over the years, I found a way to track all my eating through my hashtag on Instagram, Ernest Eat. So if you put the hashtag Ernest Eat, not eats, just Ernest Eat, no spaces, no underscores, anything, on Instagram, all the over five hundred restaurants I've been to and counting, you can follow that hashtag, and every time I do an Instagram post on food, you'll get alerted of a restaurant that I just checked out. I try to, don't do repeats. I try to do um, new restaurants I've been to for the first time, or restaurants I haven't posted about. And so every time you get that alert, it's a new spot that I haven't, for the most part. Now, sometimes I might do redos if a restaurant has, has a new menu, has new items, has a, you know, a sneak peek or something. But most of the time, it will be a restaurant that I haven't posted about yet, and I want you to check out if you haven't. I try to do new restaurants, but sometimes I circle the block if a restaurant has reinvented itself or something. So it's, it's always a good time at Ernest Eat hashtag. But I've been doing that since two thousand and fourteen and gained the pounds and everything to me to prove it. And that was the first beginning of my love for restaurants, because in order to learn, I had to fall in love with the food, and then I had unique experiences at restaurants. Then I learned about the chefs and the owners. But it was like, I had to go and experience it for several years. And then finally, what, nine years later, I become a food editor. But before then, I wrote a piece that was about five years ago called Dining While Black. And it was this big, massive, long form piece where I talked about my experiences in the Philadelphia food scene as a black diner. And I talked about all the nuances and intricate things that happened during that journey, and that piece won national awards, multiple national awards. I won my first, but not my last, Sigma Delta Chi Award from the Society of Professional Journalists. Um, it was a national award for writing that piece. And I've gotten other, in the bigger words for that, and it opened up the doors. And that's actually how I connected with people like Dr. Gio and Josh East Philly. Like, we all connected because we was in the food scene. They were, at that point, influencers and, and, and consultants in the space, and they weren't getting that much access. And then that piece happens, and then you know, the doors start opening, and we began to get close and connect. And it just changed all of our lives. And so, you know, from there, um, I didn't do as much quote unquote food writer, but I began to advise on lists and things of the sort as editor-at-large for, for Philadelphia Magazine when I was in that position. Um, and I just really, 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 really loved it. And I told myself, if I got the chance to do it um, on my terms and with the right place, I would do it. And when I saw that Eater Philly was at a position for editor, I shot my shot. My, my clipping was my, you know, Dining While Black piece, and my Instagram account, where I showed my hashtag and said, look, I haven't done that much food reporting, but I know how to report, and I know food. I know this food scene very well, and I've built a reputation for being on the food scene, and I would do a good job, and they believe me, and here I am. The rest is history. So I talk about that, but also, I'm, it's a real episode. Like, I get real about navigating the racism I've faced as a food journalist in this city. And let me be clear about the rate, what I mean by racism, like, there's a lot of industry racism locally in this town. Like, there's a monopoly, and I've talked about a little bit on this show. So y'all, this is not too unfamiliar, but I get really specific, uh, very specific, baby. I, I get very specific. So I tuned into that episode, but I, and, and actually, you, the link is in my bio. Um, so if you go to my LinkedIn bio, Instagram and Twitter, the link tree, the episode is there if you wanna just go straight to it and listen to it. But I do talk about some of the interesting things happening in the industry, like, you know, for many years, I wasn't getting invited to the events. And even in my Eater Philly position, people thought that they didn't invite me to restaurants. They just would give me press releases and just thought, like, they would throw me a bone. Meanwhile, they were inviting my white counterparts, because I'm the only black food editor around. Like, there is a couple of sprinkles of black writers, largely because I've hired some at Eater Philly. Dr. Gio, my bestie, does a lot of freelance at Eater Philly because of me. I, I've hired him to do some great work. He has immaculate taste. If there's anybody who knows food that's black in Philly as much as myself, it's Gio and it's Josh. Like, we, and, and also Jamarcus. Jamarcus be like, I'm just here to eat. No, chat, Jamarcus know about the food. Don't let him fool you. He's very modest and shit with it. But he's done eight with me about eighty percent of the places I go to, he with me. So he got opinions about restaurants. And sometimes when we get a little tipsy, oh, he'll let you know how we really feel. Uh, but he, he know. He think, and I sometimes think he's just kinda like, ah, you know, I'm just here. But when you start asking him about some spots, and what he likes and what he don't like, oh, he'll tell you. He'll tell you exactly why. He's probably one of the most opinionated food critics in the, in the group. Even though he plays it like everything's all willy nilly, but then you start talking to him, he has favorites too. Don't let him fool you. Ask about LMNO. Like, how obsessed he is with LMNO. Like, how obsessed he is with that Stephen Star restaurant. It's, I, I think it's one of his favorites. He's obsessed. And he loves Lockbar, and yes, but the rest, the rest is, you know, he has his favorites. He tries to act all, oh, everything's good, you know, I don't mind. No, he has his favorites. Um, but, um, no, they're all great. And, um, we're actually gonna be catching up this week. The goal is to go somewhere. We're gonna check out a spot that we haven't gone to, cause I've been busy. Um, you know, I've been busy. It's been a lot of March Madness. It's been a lot, a lot of things. So I'm just happy to reconnect with my brethren and get together. Um, but check out that episode of Table Eighty Six, uh, Jill's podcast. It's super dope. Um, and yes, and there's an update I'm gonna give. So, starting in April, you will most likely begin to start hearing my podcast on YouTube Music. I love YouTube Music. I don't have, I'm an Android, I'm a Google, I'm all that. I don't have Apple Music. I, I, I have, I have YouTube Music, and it's really dope. And I have a subscription. It's pretty good. My podcast will be on there. The reason why is because, if you don't know this already, Google owns YouTube and Gmail and all those things. Well, Google Podcast is no more. It's about to evaporate in the next week or so. And so, Google Podcast, cause, cause Google does everything. I'm a little saddened by that, cause Google Podcast, I was like, this is dope, cause I liked how it would show up on the Google search faster. However, it's gonna transition to YouTube, um, it's gonna transition to YouTube Music. So you can listen to my podcast, Earnestly Speaking, new episodes, previous episodes, and updated episodes moving forward from the Google family on YouTube Music. Now, y'all know I don't do Spotify, because as long as Joe Rogan is on Spotify. I'm not gonna be on Spotify. I'm not going to be on Spotify. So I know that a lot of people don't like that, and sometimes I get a little, I, I do sometimes feel a little bad, cause I'd be like, oh, I missed the Spotify wrapped and, you know, all that. But I stand on principle. I took it off a while ago. Seems like everybody alright. It looked like a lot of y'all just on Apple Podcast with it, which is fine, because that's the main host of my podcast. But I'm on all the other ones, um, you know, Amazon, all the other ones. You can call Alexa and it comes up on Alexa, and you can call Siri and come up on Siri. But the podcast does its thing. Um, but you can also, again, for my Google folks, cause I know there's a lot of Google Podcast listeners. Um, I think they're the second most under Apple, actually. Um, it's gonna transition to YouTube Music. So that transition and that upload should be happening pretty soon. Um, and so, I believe with Google Podcast, until it completely dissolves, which is gonna dissolve sometime this year. It's gonna be very soon, though. When it dissolves, um, I, I, it's gonna be going. So what they're trying to do is get podcasts to migrate to the YouTube Music platform, if they wanna stay in the Google family, which I did. And what I love about it is, is that all of that content will transition, um, all of the content will transition, um, there. So it's, it's a lot. It's a lot going on. Um, I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing how it all plays out. So let's get into, you know, these hot topics. Um, this week was a very, a very eventful week. Let me, I mean, I might have said that before, but I need to say it again. This past week has been wowed. Um, and it doesn't seem like it's gonna change. Um, plenty of updates on some interesting sketchy characters as well. As you can see, somebody is, made it to the headline, okay? He went from the sublet line to the headline, okay? Talk a mess. We, there's a lot going on. So let's get into it. Trump isn't as rich as he pretends to be, pretends to be. Trump has been struggling to pay this damn, these damn settlements, um, or these, these rulings and these payments or whatever the fuck. He's gotta pay, okay? Millions upon millions of dollars, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nearly half a billion dollars. He's gotta fork up. He's paid some of his settlements, um, ninety-one million to E. Carroll. Um, he's paid that, I believe. But he owes more millions. And let me tell you something. Loretta James, Letitia James, I'm sorry, Letitia James, uh, New York State Attorney General, she, the way she poses and smiles, she wanna seize them assets on Trump. She is grinning from, from cheek to cheek. She wants to seize them assets, because if he don't have the money. So apparently, the new plan is that he can't get lenders, he can't get major people to liquidate. He doesn't have enough cash to, to, to turn over to justify the, the loan. So he can't get anybody to loan him no serious money. The second thing is, is that it proves he doesn't have as much money as he said he do. This man at one point was a thirteen billion, artist billion, he's a billionaire. He ain't got the money, y'all. He ain't got the money. So now it's been a situation where he's gotta sell stuff, figure out stuff. The new thing he's trying to do, which we gotta see how this is gonna play out, but apparently this week, he is planning to try to make Trump Social, which is this stupid far-right, alt-right crap of an app to go public through some media company he has. And it's supposed to go public where the stock market can be traded. They're claiming it's gonna have a valuation of three billion dollars, which is wild to me. And then hope, and they're hoping that they can then use that to then convert, so he doesn't have to seize any assets, or the, the AG doesn't have to seize any assets. We'll see how this play out, but the man to be a rich white man in America, or a presumable rich white man in America, must be fucking nice. Um, because now, we're going, but also, I wanna see how influential Trump Social really is, because Trump is banking on public. Now, a lot of investors and economic experts say that they don't know what to predict with this. They say this is one of those Wild, Wild Wests. It can go left, it can go right. They don't know how it's gonna show up when it gets public on the market next week. I won't be investing in stock and, 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 and Trump Social personally. And quite frankly, you know, given how, what we know what he uses his money for, does anybody really wanna make an investment in this shit? Like, I don't know. Who knows? But this, I mean, maybe his devout fans might, because they might say, you know what, we gotta protect Trump at all costs. So maybe some of them are delusional enough that they might invest in this stupid stock, because I've heard it's called meme stock. Um, is what one financial, um, expert had described it as, um, on the, on the, on the market, which basically means that it's not that people are investing in the stock for the sake of the actual product on the market, but for other reasons. So in this case, people understand, his followers might understand that they're making an investment to basically bail him out once more. Like, they're putting money into the stock, so he can raise the value, so he can get himself out, because there's bigger fish to fry. And maybe some of these Republicans, I'm curious if, well, you know, maybe some of these Republican elected officials and others, cause they're wealthy. These congresspeople got, they're, they're multi-millionaires, not based off of their congressional salaries, but because of their connections to the stock market. You better look at some of these senators and people who just so happens to be investing in stock and, and how that influenced their public policy. Just saying, look into it. Um, a lot of them, across the left and the right, is guilty, okay? But that's how they make their money, investing in certain stocks and follow it. I mean, that, and former, well, she's, well, she's passed away. But the late Dianne Feinstein, um, in California, the senator, you know, passed away in her nineties. She had invested a lot of interest in stock, and that's how she was making her money, okay? So when you be hearing about the regulation with the stock market, baby, you know, eat the rich, all that stuff, uh, Congress in there too. But I digress. Um, I'm curious if they're going to invest, um, knowing that they may not yield the profits that, that may be told to them, that this is a get out of jail, I mean, get out of assets taken card for Trump. So, we'll see where that goes, but stay woke. The GOP are each other's throats again. Like, once again, there's the batshit amongst the Republicans. Um, Congressman Mike Johnson, who is a long time real conservative, like, this is a real conservative, who used to be, um, a prosecutor, um, and, and really big on the law. This man was carrying an assault rifle inside his office, was a part of the Freedom Caucus, which isn't about really freedom. But this man isn't like a true, I mean, he's not a Democratic lover. However, he is announcing, he's abruptly resigning from his position in Congress, because he just basically said that the Republican Party has lost its way. It's a shit show. And that they're not getting any work done. They have no rhyme or reason. Part of this is due to the fact that Speaker Mike, uh, Speaker, is it Mike Johnson? Wait, wait. Maybe I'm saying this wrong. It's, it's not Mike. Mike Johnson is the speaker. I'm sorry, let me clarify. There is another Republican congressperson, Floridian Slip. Um, I, I wanna make sure, yeah, I wanna make sure I'm accurate on this. So the person who is, is Ken Buck, I'm sorry, Ken Buck is resigning from Congress. Sorry. Ken Buck is resigning from Congress. Um, and the GOP House majority is shrinking, because also Wisconsin Republican Mike Gallagher is also, is resigning. Two Republicans have resigned the past week. Um, a lot is going on. Um, Gallagher is forty years old. Um, the, basically the GOP legislation without Democratic support is going to fail, basically. Um, that's, that can happen, um, based on the legislation, given the current circumstances. Um, it, the, the, without Democratic support will fail if just one Republican isn't on board. So it's getting tight. The, the, but control of the party is small. There's only one Republican. If one Republican decides to back off, the majority they had is, is obsolete at this point. So they've lost two people. Um, Mike Gallagher has left and Ken Buck. So Ken Buck was who I was talking about earlier, not Mike Johnson. I'm going to get to why out of Floridian Slip with Mike Johnson in a minute. But basically, Mike Gallagher is also leaving. He's resigning from his position. Um, this move will further imperil the already narrow House Republican majority. Basically, once Gallagher leaves, Republicans will only be able to afford to lose one vote on legislation, assuming all Democrats remain united in opposition. Well, this ain't no Joe Manchik because he's a senator. This is Congress. Republic, Democrats already have the majority of the Senate. Let anybody in the Republican Party de facto, and now the Democrats and the Republic, Democrats will control the House and the Senate. And mind you, that's until the elections, where it has to be a special election or November elections in general, we don't know. But the majority is getting motherfucking slim over there for Republicans. Um, it's looking bad. Um, they're out of control. And this is the stuff I'm trying to tell everyone about. Everybody's like, oh, I think Trump will win. Do not have that defeated shit. Do not come to me and tell me Trump's going to win. You're not paying attention to what's happening. The Republican Party is imploding. They are taking themselves out. These crazy ass radicals, okay, the Marty Taylor Greens, the Matt Gaetz, these people are driving the party. They're splitting them and these extreme Trump supporters within the Congress, they are just ruining everything. And, and it's a mess. And the truth of the matter is, is that the moderate Republicans are probably looking at these, at these Republicans like, you all embarrassing us, you're a liability, and they might just vote for Biden just because they want to offset and take some of these extremists off or offset their, their, their sway. Because it's too many of them that they have swayed the way that votes go. We saw this with Kevin McCarthy. We're seeing this with Mike Johnson now. So there's a lot of debacle. Okay? Um, it's a lot going on. It's a lot. The, the, you know, um, there was at one point, you know, Gallagher was a rising Republican. Many people thought he was going to run for Senate this year, but it's not happening. Um, now he says, he doesn't know what he's going to do for a living. This is what he tells reporters. Um, but he said that, that he's not suited for this lifestyle, pretty much. Like, you know, he said that he knew this wasn't going to be a career for him and he doesn't think it should be a career to be a politician. And he always thought you should run for a short period of time. So he's kind of just tapped out of this, pretty much. Um, this is his fourth term. He's checked out. He's forty. So he's probably got some pension and got some money, enough money to go, maybe enough stock. You know, who knows? But he seemed like he just checked out. However, Ken Buck, on the other hand, the one I was supposed to have been saying earlier, he's not here for it. He says all this energy and trying to impeach current President Biden is just not a good look. There is no evidence. The Republicans have been obsessed with this attempt to try to, to impeach, you know, President Biden on false information. The information that was a lead source, their smoking gun, this man named Smirnoff is now currently indicted by the federal government for all types of lying and other issues. So he's not even credible and that was the, the lead like source. Um, Ken Buck, who is not a big huge Democrat lover, moderate, he basically said that all the information that they went into finances, records, all this stuff they subpoenaed does not find, you know, Biden liable of any criminal high crimes and misdemeanors. And let's be clear, high crime and misdemeanors, you know, shit that Trump was accused of. High crimes and misdemeanors, conspiracy, you know, shit, real legitimate issues gets called out for, for impeachment. You know, you know, instigating potentially an insurrection is a high crime and misdemeanor. But like none of this shit, they, they just, they're just petty. And they're trying to level the, they leveled the playing field because what they're trying to do is do the whole, well, Biden, you know, Biden didn't do this, you know, Biden, why you all talking about this? Biden did this and, you know, want to, you know, they want to point fingers at each other and play pit for pat and tit for tat and do the whole, well, Biden, you know, Biden is impeached and Trump, they're both, you know, was impeached. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Fuck out of here. Obama was never called into impeachment. Only Democrat in recent years, I mean, there was Andrew Jackson many years ago, but the last major player was, you know, Bill Clinton. And again, Bill Clinton, you know, lied under oath. You know, had sex with Ann Turner, you know, so it was a different situation. Biden didn't have those scandals. Even Bush wasn't even called for impeachment, even though, you know, one could argue there may have been a case for him, but even he wasn't. Trump is in a unique position. He is one of the few American presidents to have that. But one of the few to be impeached twice. Th- this man's faced impeachment twice, twice in a one-term presidency. So you know, it is what it is with this guy. But Ken Buck is leaving. He feels like they're out of control. So there's bills they're trying to pass. They're upset about the budget. They're upset with the negotiations. Marty Taylor Green is now called for her party to basically encourage call for Mike Johnson, the current Democrat Speaker, I mean, Republican, Republican Speaker to step down. And this is the second, this would be the second time potentially that within a two-year span, the majority House Speaker might be losing. And here's the thing, this man has to be reconsidered. If the, if the Republicans lose control of the House, then we know it's going to be Hakeem Jeffries from the Democratic Party of New York, the Congressman from New York. Brother, black man, Hakeem Jeffries, one of the few blacks Speaker of the Houses. I mean, it would be awesome to see this happen. If that happens, if the Democrats get it, he's going to get it a hundred percent. Um, he won't probably get any challengers. But if Mike Johnson goes, who will be the next one? Because they, they seem to get upset every time we get to the budgets and negotiations, when compromises are made, they get mad. Like they got mad Kevin Johnson. I mean, like, Mike Johnson, they got mad at, uh, Kevin McCarthy. They was mad at Kevin McCarthy, was really pissed off with him. Um, was like, oh, you're making compromises, you know, we want to, you know, we want someone to fight for it. But the reality is that has always been the case for congressional major spending bills and budgets. There's always compromise. You cannot come up in there and just think you're going to be able to get everything you want. But the sad part about that compromise, and this is what has not been talked about in the media enough, and this is, you know, compromises, y'all, that really broke my heart. And, and no one's been talking about it because it was on Friday when this guy announced, because so much going on in the world. The US House Office of Diversity and Inclusion will be dissolved as a part of that government spending bill that was passed. Okay, the, again, the US House Office of Diversity and Inclusion will be dissolved. That was the compromise. Um, you know, it's going to close Monday. Um, that's all I'm going to say. What's interesting is it hasn't been alive for that long. The office was formed in March twenty twenty with a mission of creating a congressional workforce that reflected the, the makeup of the nation. Now, to be very clear, what's been interesting is that that was March twenty twenty, which means this is before the racial uprisings that this was in place and at the start of the pandemic, which is also a lot, right? But it's, it's, it's sad that this is going to get, um, cut. Yeah. And even sad is that Dr., uh, uh, Sessha Joy Moon was the director. And now she's going to have to get a new job. Um, so it's, it's just, it's just, a lot of DEI departments and colleges are getting cut. And again, compromise, right? It's, it's just, it's just sad to watch. But again, compromise. So other things that are interesting. D Ray McKesson, the big, you know, executive director of Campaign Zero. Remember many, a couple of years ago, I did a big story back in twenty twenty-two. I interviewed Jonetta Elsie about Campaign Zero. That's that big organization that was doing a Black Lives Matter movement that was doing its own thing for social justice, was supposed to be coming up with some real tangible solutions to, to reduce, you know, you know, criminal police injustice, all that kind of stuff. Well, you remember I did this big bombshell story for New York Magazine exposing the, you know, the, the rise and rupture and rupture. Um, or, or, or rapture, rupture, whatever of Campaign Zero. And basically I interviewed D Ray McKesson, I interviewed Jonetta Elsie, I interviewed this guy named Samuel Suniu. Um, about, you know, the drama. I did a follow-up piece for Daily Beast, like shortly after that piece came out in around February of twenty twenty-two. So that was like two years ago. Um, and Sam, who was a part of the Campaign Zero team, he had created the whole digital, you know, blueprint, all his information, his systems to create, create updates on police issues and brutality. He had the data, the software, and basically accused Campaign Zero of stealing his work because they basically took the software, the technology, you know, even though they fired him, and it's being misappropriated, it's being mismanagement, according to Sam, and all of that. Well, for a long time, I wanted to know what was going on and it just came out this week. The court document was filed in New York, Bloomsburg, um, reported on it. But basically, there's going to be a lawsuit. This lawsuit will presume, there will be a lawsuit. Sam is suing Campaign Zero based on this situation with this technology. You can Google up the tea, the updates, but it is really spicy. Um, but D Ray McKesson is in hot water. Campaign Zero was in hot water. I don't know how they're going to recover. I mean, there's, they haven't really been talked, they haven't really been that relevant to really be honest. But there's enough money they got that keeps people like him, you know, making a really nice little salary despite the fact that his star has definitely faded. Um, a lot of people are over him. That Ziwi interview he did, you know, a year or so ago, didn't necessarily make him look that good. Um, so it's been interesting to follow how that's been going down. Um, you know, but we'll stay tuned and see where it plays out. Um, I want to do an update on the royal drama. It has been announced publicly by, um, Kate Middleton, who is the wife, the Duchess, the, some would say the next queen of England alongside her husband, Prince William. She announced that she has cancer. She not disclosed what type of cancer she had. But she, um, did a video and announced it and it was very heartbreaking, um, to hear. Cancer is terrible. Um, and it's sad that she's going through that as a mother, as a wife. Um, it's unfortunate. It's also a time that like, you know, there was a lot of speculation about a lot of things. And, um, you know, you know, no one would have imagined it was cancer. People thought it was, you know, maybe some plastic surgery or something. But it's, it's, I say all this to say that it's been frustrating because the royal family, the royal, the firm, the way the Buckingham Palace responds to press, the fact that they let this kind of just linger in the public stratosphere for so long, they, they just, they just wasn't being fully transparent about the things that were going on. They, they, this rollout and the way the communication was a mess and also I think fueled some of the, 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 the outlandish things that was said and it was very unfortunate. Um, so, you know, I, 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 my thoughts and prayers go out to her. Um, and, and her family. I think it's, it's, you know, it's cancer. And so people that, people have said some interesting things on the internet. I'm just like, have a heart, people. You know, you could disagree with some of the allegations made around Kate, but you can also have compassion to feel for those children. Right? They didn't choose the mother that they have. They didn't choose the lifestyle that they live. And at the end of the day, you know, she's going through chemo. Um, she, she, she plans to have a successful chemo, you know, she, she should be fine. But, you know, it's still a scary situation. And so I hope that, you know, um, she recovers and comes out an even better person. So just wanted to say that. So in Philadelphia, um, it's been getting hot. If anybody listened to my show last week, we're on a break this week because we're about to get ready for Good Friday. You know, Easter's coming up. Everything's coming up. What I want to say about this situation at City Council this week, two titans clashed. Council President Kenyatta Johnson and lone veteran journalist, veteran, um, politician, elected official, City Council member Curtis Jones of West Philadelphia. Um, it's no secret at this point that Curtis Jones wanted to be the council president. That didn't happen for various reasons. Kenyatta got it. And ever since then, Curtis and Kenyatta have had these subtle digs at each other, um, at City Council. Corrections on how to present, not talking to each other, all of these different things. But everything really came to blows, um, during last Thursday's City Council session because during that time, um, there is public, you know, the public, um, hearing where the public section, where the public can come out and public testimony is what they call it. They go on record. Um, I've participated in it, you know, for, for various reasons. Um, but public testimony is a big deal. It's a, it's a major part of City Council because that's when the people get to share their perspectives and their thoughts. And so I was on there, uh, I've been, I've done it before. But there was a young woman who's come on City Council, um, come on City Council, public testimony every week for several weeks and wanted to, you know, it was speak on what's going on in Palestine and everything of that nature. And each time Kenyatta, Council President Johnson would abruptly interrupt her and tell her, is there anything, is there anything on the agenda? And he would dismiss her. But she has said, um, this week she spoke out and just was like, I've tried to come to your office. I've tried to come to several offices of City Council. Nobody would listen to me. And so this is the only place I feel like I can speak on this issue. And in that moment, Curtis Jones spoke up and basically chastised, you know, Kenyatta in the way that, you know, she's been cut off. But there are rules and the rules do state that, you know, all matters brought up must be speaking on the current legislation and things at the time. Because to be honest, you know, to be fair, if they did let public comment just be on whatever, um, then technically, you know, this would have, you know, anybody in Maryland could come down to Philadelphia, um, and talk. And so there is checks and balances. But there has something to be said about the nature of how they do address, uh, certain people. And Curtis Jones spoke up and had enough. And there was a little bit of back and forth, but Majority Leader Kathy Girma Richardson kind of wrote, wrote, read the rules and reinforced it. But then it was also another speech given by Curtis Jones in which he really spoke up about just the culture of City Council and, and things of that nature and, and, and how this is the people's house and, and all these different things. And you know, it was, it was a moment, you know, he really spoke up and it was a moment of back and forth and it was getting very heated between them. Um, but I think at the end of the day, the biggest elephant in the room behind why this young woman feels inclined to speak about Palestine, that, that people were saying like, oh, you know, we can't even address an issue, this issue, because it's not in Philadelphia. But I want to remind everyone that in the fall before, Council Member Kenyatta Johnson was a, um, City Council President. And remember, I told you that this was one of the darkest days in City Council's history. Because it was the day they proposed this very, um, what people have viewed to be a very, uh, pro-Israel stance in support of Israel um, during the Israeli war with Hamas. And the tides have been turning politically, like now the US is pushing for a ceasefire. You know, even though they're going up against Russia's interest in that, of course, which who cares what Russia thinks. Um, but there is this, now there's been a reversal. You know, even Senate leader, Democratic Senate leader Chuck Schumer, um, even has said that as a Jewish person, as a pro-Israel politician, he even has said that Palestinians and their families should not be paying for the sins of Hamas. Well said. Um, at a certain point, and they also said that Bibi Netanyahu, who is Benjamin Netanyahu, who is the Prime Minister of Israel, um, they're not agreeing with the way that he is acting, that they're asking for a democratic election. That Israeli voters should vote to vote him out and they should have opportunity to because his, his very much connection to this, this very extreme, you know, um, very strict conservative party base that does not reflect the views of the population arguably, it's taken over the entire party's identity and their entire, um, I mean, not the president, but Israel's reputation on the global scale, um, and the world stage is just not looking good. And for so long, the US, you know, appeared to, by some arguably, to appear complicit and not taking the bold enough stance. But it's obvious that for the first time in many, many years of foreign diplomacy, United States isn't, is really, you know, kind of like looking at Israel like, look, we're going to support you and defend you, but at the same time, hmm, there needs to be some reconsiderations about how they, they plan to aggravate the situation. Too many people have died, too many innocent people have died, too many families have been broken. It's a damn shame. And so that being said, there are people who feel like, well, if the United, if, if City Council can take a stance and send out this support letter by, for can take a stance and send out this support letter by, for Israel that was lobbied by a lot of pro-Israel groups in Philadelphia, which again, I'm not making a judgment about the side of this show, I'm just saying that this is what happened, right? Then the Palestinian community in Philadelphia believe that the city should put out a statement, either call for a ceasefire, addressing what's been going on. And so I feel like what's good for the geese should be good for the gander, like the favorite, you know, the people should be showing. Because to me, when stuff like that happens, it actually builds more division and animosity amongst people on this issue. Because then, once again, there there's gonna be people that's gonna say, oh, that the that the group, the pro-Israel group, because I'm not gonna call them Jewish, because the pro-Israel group is not just people that are Jewish, there are people that are politically pro-Israel that are not Jewish. So this is not a Jewish, you know, you know, I tell people like, you know, even people that are pro-Palestine, not everybody is pro-Palestine is Muslim. There are people that are Christian, there are even people that are Jewish that are very pro-Palestinian and has been very critical of, you know, what's been going on with Israel. So this is a very, you know, I've I've told people to steer away from treating this like it's a religious matter. Because what I've seen people say is, oh, if you're not pro-Israel, then you know, or you you have a question about the government, you're being antisemitic. We gotta stop that. We we gotta stop misusing words. We, you know, as a wordsmith, this is a lot, I'm not gonna go there, but there's just a lot of things wrong with how there has been criticism to black people, to black and brown people when using the word racism. But interestingly enough, there seems to be a loose interpretation by some members of the Jewish community where anything that don't support them politically or don't support whatever, then becomes a conversation around antisemitism is like, well, what do you say to the Jewish people who outrightly do not support, you know, these matters? Do you call them antisemitic? I I don't. No? Okay, so is it that people don't agree with the way in which this government, this state head is operating in a political sense? Not saying they don't agree, because then people would argue, right, that, you know, supporting the Israeli government's attack on Hamas, even though they're attacking areas that is killing innocent Palestinians, will be Islamophobic. But people seem not to really care about Islamophobia the same way they do about other things. And that's a problem, right? And so I say all this to say that, you know, Curtis Jones, part of the issue is that Curtis Jones actually wanted to propose legislation that his body, a bill, that it, once again, was it going to actually do anything of material substance? No, it was more style of substance, but so was the other previous bill. There was no money that went from Philly to Israel. There was no, you know, major governmental change. It was not, but it was a statement. And and I think, to be fair, Curtis tried to propose it, but then was told by um leadership within the local Democratic Party within City Council to not go forward with it. Um, and I think they feared that what happened last fall would happen again. And so he was turning, he was backed down from doing it. Which I think he might feel some level of disappointment a little bit about it. In my opinion, that's my interpretation. He didn't say that when I interviewed him. But there's some, there's something going on there. And so, you know, at the end of everything, they kind of like, you know, buddy buddy and smiled and played it up for the cameras. But everybody know, this is gonna take a lot of working conversations. And that's okay. That's life, like, you know, men in politics. I actually find it interesting. I I find it fascinating. I think it's a good thing. I feel like that's good to have healthy discourse. We should be having more debates and discourse around things we agree when we don't agree. That's what a democracy looks like. My opinion. So I wasn't too disappointed. I felt like let them debate, because I do see the 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 sides of approach, right? Rules are the rules, right? I agree with that, right? But at the same time, you you gotta keep that same energy and implement those rules. Because there's been a lot of people who've been able to skip over certain things based on biases and relationships. And and Philadelphia is a sick and tired of it. We see it, we hear it, we know about it. So stop trying to play it like Boo Boo the Fool. That's how I feel about that. So in other news, there's been a lot of chatter around um Talcum X um and his recent shenanigans. Now, last week, we had talked about, you know, the initial um buzz around the fact that he had converted to Islam, you know, Shaun King, the infamous Shaun King. Um, and the piece I wrote for Air Mail that unpacked a lot of of the current controversy surrounding him getting in the middle of the Israeli Hamas war. Well, there's been some updates and the updates are not looking that good um for Mr. King or um other names that people call him. Um, so this came from CAIR, uh, C A I R. Um, they are a Muslim advocacy group that's really prominent in the United States. They have a Minnesota-based group, um, CAIR Minnesota, that had booked him to do a keynote speech on Sunday for IFtar during Ramadan. He was gonna give this big keynote address. There was a lot of buzz, but there was a lot of controversy and backlash. And so on Friday, this is what they say in the public statement, quote, "We have heard concerns expressed directly and indirectly by our community regarding Shaun King being the keynote at your annual IFtar fundraiser. We have made the decision to not have Shaun King as the keynote speaker for our upcoming annual fundraising dinner. This has become a distraction from the sole purpose of our event, to support the work of protecting and advancing the civil liberties of Muslims in Minnesota, especially in these challenging times. We appreciate your feedback and are committed to ensuring our focus remains on our mission. Thank you for your understanding and continued support." That was a public statement by uh CAIR Minnesota, C A I R. Now, there is a person who, named Lena K. Gartner, who really led the calls and the drive to get this out there. She's an advocate in the community and she really was very vocal in getting the Muslim community, especially in Minnesota and around, to really look into Shaun King. Now, you all know I've been into Shaun King, um, you know, for a long time. And um, this is something that, um, you know, was a big deal to me. Just the issues with him and I've covered him, as you all know, um, but to see other people um doing it. And like I told you all last week, I was told the Muslim community do not play that. And huh, within a week, look what's happened. So there's a lot to be said about this. Um, you know, there was some other news that, you know, I didn't cover this because I didn't know this had took place, but, you know, things have been happening really fast around this news around Talcum X. So one of the interesting things that came about was that he was supposed to be doing this, you know, uncensored tour or whatnot, where he was gonna be traveling, speaking about Palestine and these other issues around the war. And he was supposed to be having Malcolm Moore be a part of it. Well, Malcolm Moore has pulled out and has kind of distanced himself from Shaun King and from the event. Initially, he was headlined alongside Shaun King and another guy. And I think last week I told you all in the last episode about Shaun King um and Malcolm Moore being involved. Well, Malcolm Moore has left. Um, you know, sources close to it has contacted the the press and told people, but 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 Malcolm Moore is 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 not aligning himself with this. So just want to update the people on that situation. Um, but we'll keep, we'll stay tuned. This is, this is one of those situations where, you know, you know, CAIR is a big group. See, you know, they are a big group. So anytime you see a major Muslim organization that's nationally respected in America have a group in Minnesota, which Minnesota is known for having a large population of Muslim Americans, to see them publicly acknowledge their concerns and listen to the community's concerns enough to pull him as a keynote speaker like days before the event, that's a big damn deal. Um, and the fact that they said that it was a distraction, which is what I've always have said about Shaun King. I always feel like a lot of people, you know, for various reasons, might know things about Shaun King that might be concerning or raise questions. But they often will feel like the the ends justify the means. Sure, he's controversial, but in many ways, he, people have accused him of exploiting situations. And I think people exploit him. I think there is exploitation happening in his entire ordeal. Um, and so there are people that I do feel clout chase to align themselves with Shaun King for their own purposes. And then there's also people that I feel like think that he is a true legitimate refuge for them, which I don't think he is. That's my opinion. I'm speaking for myself. And some people have might have one point in time, there are those who did trust him and then did not trust him based on how they felt he did them. So there's a bunch of, you know, uh, various interpretations regarding him. But for me, I think that for this group to pull out so quickly after initially aligning themselves with him, is the 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 turnaround rate is happening fast. For those of us who's been warning the public about legitimate allegations and concerns surrounding Shaun King, that just feels like they've been consistent, I want to be very clear that to see this rapid major institution pull out as fast as they've done, that's letting me know and letting others know that they're being heard. And and the social media, the massive social media outcry around him, as he's grown various adversaries and and legitimate enemies from various sectors, people are starting to be put up on game. And as he begins to move his advocacy work away from black community spaces, that right there is, I just gotta call it for what it is. It's very interesting that the moment Shaun King began to pivot away from doing things in the black community, that all of a sudden, that's when people started to wake up and be more critical. Coincidence or not? I think it's, I think it's more of the latter. Um, but hmm 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 hmm, don't know. But I just think it's interesting that that the moment it got out of the quote unquote black community space, and let me be clear. I know intersectionality exists. I know that there are black Muslims. But these organizations are not often the face of these organizations, not black Muslims or led by black Muslims. They're not. They include them, but oftentimes, the the loud signs and and people speaking out in this regard, you know, around this particular issue, it's interesting. So maybe he had put his foot in something else, um, you know, o- other people. Um, so it 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 says a lot. It it says a lot. Um, you know, you know, I just hmm, just a lot going on um across the board. So we'll see. But also, let me tell y'all this. Y'all are so funny. You all see things that I don't necessarily see. Um, and I appreciate it. So apparently he was on TikTok, which I already know how to feel about TikTok. And he kept making, uh, Shaun King, Talcum X made a post, basically, once again, trying to defend himself, which is his right as an American, you know. Even if you don't agree with his statements, he has a right to defend himself, right? So the issue with his statement was that people noticed that he kept saying, you know, if you all have an earnestly criticism about me or you you feel earnestly this. He kept saying earnestly, and at one point someone thought they heard him say earnestly speaking, but he kept using the word earnestly in a certain way. And mind you, this was right after I did my podcast episode last week on, you know, Talcum X. And so there's an obsession there, people. There there is an obsession. I, why is, I was like, why are you so obsessed with me? No, but I get it, right? I mean, he is pressed. For somebody who's blocked me on all his major platforms, he's made it a point to, you know, still keep his little, his little antlers up. Um, and he swears to God that I am the reason why he's getting all this smoke. I wish I had that much influence. I do have influence, but I don't, I I'm not the reason why. The thousands upon thousands of people. Okay, and the dozens and dozens of people in this activist movement space that you fucked over, right? Because them receipts are there, right? Those receipts are there. There are Tamir, Tamir Rice's mother, okay? Google what she had to say about Shaun King. Google what a lot of black organizers and activists have said about Shaun King over the years. Chow, please, read that open letter asking Shaun King to sit down back in two thousand and what, twenty nineteen, something like the nineteen, I think it was. Like, like, there is a body of body upon tons of articles and open letters with hundreds of signatures of people that have that have had issues with Shaun King. Like, Chow, this didn't start with me and it's not gonna end with me. I might be one of the most known reporters that have covered Shaun King, but I'm not the only journalist that's covered Shaun King. I'm not the only journalist's voice that's been critical of him. So when I, when I see people trying to make me, trying to, Chow, bye. He likes to, he loves to always target black, young queer people, specifically writers. Myself, there was a young woman named Clarissa who was at Spellman at the time in Atlanta, where he, you know, targeted her for a tweet. I mean, this dude is just, just so fucking petty, insecure, and he's a loser. He's a loser. And at this point, everyone's over his antics. It's about damn time, because he's been doing it for so long. At this point, give it a fucking rest. Give it a fucking rest. Enough. Enough. On behalf of civil society, on behalf of people with decency, enough. We we we, we're tired. We're tired of these helicopter-ass activists implementing C marks that every time there's some drama, there's some trauma, here the fuck you are with a selling point. It's always something connected to money, something connected to, you know, like, get out of here. Get out of here. Every single time there's a crisis, here you come, trying to be some savior. Stop it. Enough. And to the people that follow him and play into this Messiah complex, get you some fucking courage. Be the person that you try to put onto others who are complete shams. Celebrity culture has gotten us to this point where people just completely just, ugh, it's enough. And I'm, I feel like when celebrity culture and activism culture merged and had a baby called Influencer, right? They created this, 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 this thing. It it just got over, it got overhand, out of hand. It's like, my goodness, it's always something to sell. Always something to sell. VIP tickets and dinners and this and like, it's always something to fucking sell. That's all I got for him. Moving along. Um, so there is some drama at MSNBC. You all have been following me talking about these cable news stations. Um, I just, I'm, I'm just been getting over all of them. So there has been tea. Well, the tea's been out and and there's been lots to say. So the Republican National Committee Chair, um, Rona McDaniel, who we talked about a couple of weeks ago, she's no longer the RNC chair anymore. She resigned. Remember, because I told you a couple of episodes back that one of Trump's daughter-in-laws is seeking to get that job so that she can basically use the RNC money allegedly to potentially put money on his court legal fees as he continues to maneuver the the courts with all these these lawsuits and counts and shit. So now the tea is, is that she signed a contributor deal with NBC News, which pissed off a lot of the staffers at MSNBC. They were unsettled. But MSNBC President Rashida Jones, who's a black woman, um, thought she could calm down the backlash by telling employees that there are no plans to have McDaniel's on its shows on MSNBC. Now, whatever goes on with NBC News as a, as a big old giant, who knows? Um, because the tea is NBC News political chief had nothing but positive things to say when they announced this last week. Um, she sent out a memo and said that twenty twenty four, quote, the political chief said, is that twenty twenty four, quote, and let me also clarify this. This is the NBC News political chief, not um Rashida Jones at MSNBC. So let me be very clear. NBC Universal, all of them, they own NBC, NBC News, MSNBC, all of that. NBC News is on the, um, how do I describe it? The the primetime network news station channel. But MSNBC is the cable news channel. And there's different leaders and bosses and people that run those with those particular channels. So Rona, um, Rona McDaniel is gonna be a part of NBC News. She's not a part of MSNBC as of right now, but you never know. Anything can change. Or as of right now, Rashida Jones wants people to know that. Um, but anyway, this NBC News chief, however, likes this, said that, quote, important moment, that twenty twenty four is an important moment to have a voice like Rona's on the team. Now, we're gonna follow up with this because the tea is hot. As y'all know, with NBC News, Meet the Press is Sunday, was on Sunday. Um, of course, you know, the the host of this iconic show is Kristen Walker, Welker, um, Kirsten Welker, um, Walker, sorry, is it Welker? I think it's Welker, yeah. She's from Philly, but now she's a big deal. So she is now, she did the interview with um Rona McDaniel on her show, and it was a hot interview, okay? But it's also a gag because I'm just like, you're doing this interview, but Rona got paid. Rona got a check to go and do this interview. But, you know, Rona, wanna, McDaniel, wanna? But you know, Rona wanna, McDaniel wanna do her little thing. She's, you know, there was questions about, you know, hey, you were defending the, the January sixth insurrection. You defended Trump. You, you said that you defended all this, read her around election being rigged. I mean, Kristen Welker was giving her that work and she tried to put it off and be passive by saying, oh, well, you know, I was the spokesperson, you know, it's the party. Trying to act like she was separating herself from what the party was doing. Chow, bye, bye, get out of here with that. And honestly, you know what? The, the, this is why the public has become mistrusting of journalists in the media. And, and as a journalist, you know, that's why every day I have to make it a point and I'm going to keep it one hundred. I'm gonna say something right now that might shake the table a little bit. But what I've always believed in this day and age is that when you are a journalist with, with notoriety, prominence, awareness, all that stuff, like me, what I've said to publications I've worked for and I'm, I'm not trying to toot my horn, but beep beep, honk honk, you know? I'm just saying, my, what I've said to them is I have my own established credibility. No publication that I work for or write for defines my credibility. My credibility is defined by the work that I produce. So no matter where I go, my readers, subscribers, listeners, watchers are going to follow me wherever I go based on my reputation. I have been at publications, okay? We're not naming names that have had, I've written and contributed and, you know, wrote guest pieces at publications that did not overall have the best reputation as a publication. But there have been people that have said to me, you know what? I don't really like their place too much, but I read what you write because I trust you. I listen to what you have to say. And so that's stuck with me and that is why we have, earnestly speaking, the podcast. Because I always wanted to provide an independent outlet that was no edits, no filters, all me for my listeners, that if you don't want to read anything else from me on any of these publications platforms, you had an unfiltered, uncensored, fully earnest-centric produced podcast. That's why I do what I do. But it always has been the thing, like people have told me, like, you know, last week, people say, look, I've never really read Air Mail like that. You know, I always felt like it was for white people and a little stuffy and I never seen any diverse voices. But when I saw that you was dropping this Sean King piece, I got a subscription. A couple of y'all messaging DMing me and told me that you never ever heard of Air Mail. You never even knew about it. I appreciate that and to be honest, it's a mutual beneficial relationship for these publications, right? I get paid well for my work and, and they get the ability to get new readers. Now, whether or not they keep them, you know, is, is up to what they do as a company. But as long as they keep me there, they will keep a certain audience. And so that's how this works. I believe in this day and age, you know, in this day and age where we have what I call subscriber culture, everybody subscribes to things now, everybody cherry picks and, and there's pros and cons to that. Cause to be real with you, I personally don't know how I feel about subscriber culture now when it comes to people cherry picking who they want to re-listen to. Because you know, I'm a millennial, but I kind of grew up, I remember being younger and when I read a publication, I read everybody. You know, when I read the newspaper, I read everything in the newspaper. When I read a magazine, I read everything in the magazine. When I watched TV, I watched, you know, multiple shows. Nowadays, you know, there's this subscriber culture where like, for example, newspapers now will allow you to subscribe to an author. So whenever an author drops an article, you will get notifications only from that author. You don't get everybody's shit. You still can if you want to, but now you have an option to opt in. Well, what if that person is a, hmm, I'm not gonna name names, but a really radical conservative writer or racist writer or somebody who's just so far gone. Nowadays, people can curate their news so they can cherry pick what they want to read and what they don't. And then to some extent, I, that's good in some ways, but then in some ways, if you are a major media publication that's fact checking and doing your due diligence, we should be trying to get everybody to read all types of stuff. So that's a little alarming to me. But I will say that in a world that does not have enough diverse writers, whether that's women writers, queer writers, black writers in between, right? Combinational multiple identities. It might be that for some people of color, women, queer folks, that sometimes they may say, you know, I don't want to read all this white stuff. I don't want to read all these, these opinions that are dated. I just want to read the brother who was writing these great pieces, right? I can understand that argument. But for all of media, I think subscriber culture is a little eh, not my cup of tea personally. I read a lot of stuff, y'all. I get better as a writer and as a journalist and as a podcast and everything else because I like to read different perspectives. It actually influences how I argue and discuss it on this show and everything else because I need to know what the street's saying. Even if I don't agree, I like to let y'all know what people are saying so that you can understand how I arrived in my opinion and maybe you can formulate your own opinion. But that's what critical thinking is about. Just saying, just a food for thought. So that interview, um, on, on Meet the Press, which I got to watch, uh, was on Sunday. And right after that interview, Chuck, uh, Chuck Todd, who used to be hosting Meet the Press and you know, I have up and down how I feel about him sometimes. But he was in the kitchen cooking with this statement, just really going in about how Rona McDaniel being on the show is just a hot mess to be the part of NBC News. Like nobody's feeling this decision, nobody. So. The tea spills. So this week's Ask Ernest is hilarious and you know, I'm going, I'm going to entertain this. Take it all different perspectives. I'm going to read this week's Ernest, Ask Ernest, um, this week because it's a very good. I mean, hmm, I don't know, y'all gonna hear it, but I, I, I like the way this gentleman had presented this question and this, this, this discussion because he was very descriptive. And I like when somebody really explains the nature of it because it, it's going to allow me to give him, in my opinion, some very thorough advice. And I know some women who listen to this podcast episode is going to feel multiple ways. And I, I, you know, I'm just gonna give my perspective. I have no dog in the fight, but listen, it can happen to anyone. So here it goes. Hey, what's up, E? I'm just doing how I imagine a voice. Hope you're doing well. I hope you enjoying your spring and out here going out to the hot restaurants and eating yourself up. Okay. Um, anyway, so let me scroll and read. So I got this quick question. I know you don't like to talk about gold diggers, yada, 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 lol, lol, L A M. What is it? Le- Levimac? Oh, L M A O. Um, but I do really feel like this is a real different situation. So for the past several weeks, there was a girl who was a coworker of mine who now has a new job, but we work in the same building. We don't work at the same company, but we're in the same building. It's a multiplex, not gonna name the street, you know, I ain't gonna even name, I ain't even gonna name the location, the area of the town. Cause you know, people start putting they spotty senses. But to be clear, it's like a multi-work plaza. So consider it, hmm, I don't want to get too descriptive. But it's a place with multiple places that they worked at and now she, she's got a new job there, but they're still there. While he, they worked together, he had a crush on her. He says, I was really feeling her, wanted to talk to her, but never wanted to mix work with pleasure because I had a situation in the past that got a little sticky, if you know what I mean. Can't relate, but I hear you because I know people didn't, didn't fuck coworkers and shit get weird. So. I met her for lunch. I saw her at the cafeteria, not gonna name the location, but some of y'all might be like, hmm, I think I might know where this is. Actually not, because I started doing my research and realized there's a lot of places. But anyway, met her at the cafeteria. And he didn't say cafeteria, he said something else, but I feel like if I use that word, y'all might start guessing where it's at and I'm not trying to do this because the city too small, sir. But we're gonna say cafeteria. Met her at the cafeteria. She was looking good. We was catching up. I bought her lunch. Just remember this. She didn't ask me to, but I felt like since we were cool, we was always cool, it was nothing sexual. Just thought I wanted to buy her lunch and she gave me her number. We started texting, but nothing crazy, just good mornings, hey, what's up? Laughing about old coworkers, blase, blase, blase. And she hit me up again and said, can we do lunch again? I said, cool. So long story short, they went to the cafeteria. He says, she came up with me when she started, I was getting something to eat. She's looked at what I was ordering. She said, that looks good. I couldn't help myself as a gentleman, but to say, oh, do you want some too? She said, sure. And he borrowed lunch again. Okay. He said, they kept texting and he brought up, maybe, you know, we can go out for drinks. She said that she would be too busy every time he asked about drinks. Apparently she would always have an excuse. He said he attempted to hit her for drinks three times. And then they didn't have conversation. For clarity, I forgot to add this detail when he was describing her. She's apparently, allegedly she's single. He follows her on IG. When he looks at her IG, there's no pictures of a boyfriend or anything like that on her IG. So, and he's also single to, to just make sure that's clarified. So he says, time, a couple of days passed and then he said Friday, she hit him up again and said she was at the cafeteria and he told her to, he was, he was running a little fast. He said, you know, get lunch and he'll meet her there. Pay attention to those details. Came a little late. He was going to get his food, but this time around, she did not get her food. She saw him again, said, I'll get what you're getting. He was gonna pay for himself, but then she looked at him and said, you gonna do me like that? And he joked and said, nah, he paid for lunch again. Now this happened on Friday. He asked me, he feels like he's getting played, what she do? Help, I'm dealing with a lunch digger parentheses. Okay. Hmm, 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 hmm. Maybe I should add this little detail. So it, so this guy is under thirty. He's not twenty-one, he's over twenty-one. I don't want to put out ages, but he's not, he's, he's under thirty. So I just want to set this up this way and he's definitely over twenty-one. So he's an adult, he's a grown man and he's out of school. So. I'm gonna, you know, look, look, everybody's money's different. So look, you a dude, you single, you young, you know, fairly young, you know? You ain't trying to spend your lunch money. You ain't trying to drop money to pay for two lunches every time you see somebody, especially when, you know, it is what it is. Now, I mean, this could have a different meaning if he was a little bit older or not, maybe not. But I do feel like if there, if you, if you feel like you might be getting used or played or being taken advantage of, let's say taken advantage of, because I feel like lunch ain't that's like, I mean, I don't know. What y'all, I mean, I ain't gonna put out the places they're eating, but like, I mean, I don't necessarily want to say it's gold digging, but you didn't say gold dig, you said lunch digger, which is accurate possibly. But I do feel like there is a pattern here and I think the pattern is, is that whenever this person calls you is when they want something. And whether this is a friendship or relationship, that's not a good look. Regardless of whatever y'all situation, look, you're not dating her. So there's no obligations. Clearly she's creating a certain level of boundaries on the relationship. So I feel like in a way she might be friends on, joining you. You think she's cute, so that's why you're doing it. She is a, is a woman, so she has an intuition and lets her know that she knows you like her and how quick, you know, you gotta remember, you approached her at the cafeteria. So you kind of struck up this connection and then you got a little fresh and you paid for the lunch, which is a good flex, it's a good thing to do. Listen, that's, that's, that's a, that's fly. You didn't buy a drink, you bought her lunch. That's nice. But then the second time you did it, still charming, still a gentleman. Third time you wasn't trying to do a look like, just to test it and she still kind of slid into the charm and you did it. Okay, that's three strikes. So you know what that means, three, three strikes, shout out. So I'm not saying that there should be anything else, but it seems as though there is a, there is a difference in this dynamic. You clearly like her. You've tried to set up a situation to, to further this out of, you know, you all's, you know, working space. Doesn't seem like she's interested in that. However, she see you as the lunch dude. So you gotta decide if you want to be a lunch dude. So my advice to you would be try to have a conversation. What are y'all talking about at lunch? Like, are y'all even talking or she just eating and just cracking up? I would just figure out, I think you should at this point, kind of, you know, really give, move a little forward with your shot. Like, don't just say, let's go out for drinks because to a certain extent, she might be expecting you to pay for that. And it sounds like a date. You kind of did put it on the table. Or you gotta decide, maybe you don't want to go to the cafeteria, maybe you need to bring your own lunch. And it also seems like it's not all the time you all are doing this. So it just seems like whenever she feels like she wants you to make it happen, you're supposed to come to her rescue and y'all are in, even though y'all don't work in the same company, you all are still working in the same building. So there is that proximity. But see, to me, even if y'all are not fraternizing under company rules, you've created an environment that's still in the same parameters. So yeah, technically company pro- protocol don't apply, but the dynamics of being in the same building with somebody that you have this with, that could still be a little tricky. So I would just say, you know, you're at the age where, you know, I would just let it be, know how you feel and see if it lands. And if it don't, then decide how you want to move forward. That's what I got. If you think there's more to be said, I don't know. It's, it's lunch, y'all, it's lunch. Ain't no sex, ain't no confusion, you know, for now. So moving on. So to movies, um, have a confession to make. So for the past week, since this debuted finally on Disney Plus, I have watched this about three times in the past week. And for those who know, it's like two and a half hours. So I've given way more time than I need to. This is the Eras Tour Taylor's Edition. Look, the Taylor Spears, the Taylor Swift concert, I don't know, I don't know why it has this effect on me, but I just love watching it. I just, I, I, listen, I get it. I don't care. I just, some things just don't make sense. It just don't make sense, but I just love it. I love it, I love it, I love it. I love the songs that she's added to the tour. Listen, you, you talking to somebody, this came out on October thirteenth, the thirteenth, the day after my birthday. Let me tell you, I skipped having a birthday brunch on Saturday because I wanted to see this. And I saw it on Saturday, I saw it on Sunday. I'm the reason why it made ninety minute the box office open a weekend. I got the popcorn bucket, the, the, the really good hard one and the movie, um, thing and the movie poster. Like I have all the first week stuff. Like, I'm sorry, but like, I just, I don't know why it has this impact on me, but I just, I'm addicted. I, I just, it's just so good. I just, I just, it is, it just excites me, it's just everything about it. I'm sorry, I just, I just can't get enough. Just want to let y'all know, if you've got Disney Plus, just when I thought my Disney Plus subscription, well, see, I was never going to cancel it because my little brother and I share it, the one who is fourteen and he watches like Star Wars and all these, the stuff on it, they got all the Star Wars stuff. And I, and I have forced him to watch National Geographic because I dad when I was little. So, you know, he turns, well, he turns fourteen in April, he's thirteen now. But I try to get him to watch some educational stuff, which he do. Um, and he watches National Geographic on there. So we share the account, but it's so funny because he, he called me and he was like, you watch Taylor Swift? Cause he doesn't watch it, he had his little voice. Do you watch Taylor Swift? I was like, I do, I do. And you, and you, you watching The Simpsons and you shouldn't be watching The Simpsons at your age. Even though I remember watching Simpsons, The Simpsons when I was his age, but anyhow. But he, you know, it's cool. He watches his stuff and so that's why I have a Disney Plus account. Plus I do watch the old animated films, every, listen, y'all, I'm sorry. Hey, look, I'm old school with it. I don't want to see no, no live action versions. I go straight to the source, baby. I watch, what did I watch other day? I watched The Lion King, I watched Aladdin and I know Aladdin race has got its history, but Chow, I mean, them songs hit. I know Arabian Nights is problematic, we don't talk about Arabian Nights in the beginning, but a whole new world. I mean, my goodness, Prince Ali, oh my goodness. Um, but I watched that, I watched Beauty and the Beast, I saw Beauty and the Beast last month. Um, wasn't I watching that that just had me tearing? Oh my God, The Fox and the Hound. See, that's the deep Disney. You a real Disney, listen, I'm a real Disney fan. I grew up in Disney world, okay? Disneyland, I have Disney collectibles, Chow, I'm a real Disney stan, okay? I love me some Disney back in the day. Um, so I watched The Fox and the Hound and I was tearing down. You know, watching these movies when you're older, you realize that they really are timeless classics. Like I understand what it meant for me and my parents to go see Disney movies. Like they were enjoying them just as much as me. Hell, they might've enjoyed them more than me when I look back at some of the Pixar films that came out back in early days, like Monsters Inc. and all that. And when I go back and watch those films, I'm like, oh my goodness, was these made for kids or was these really made for adults? Like it's just, it baffles me, but go. But go back and watch Monsters Inc., y'all, like, I was ten years old when Monsters Inc. came out, or was it two? Yeah, about, I was like one years old, I'm sorry, ten years old when Monsters Inc. came out, and I rewatched it, and I was like, I did not catch any of these jokes. Toy Story, hmm. Listen, none of these movies were really made for kids, okay? I don't know how they got away with the rated PG, the rated G's labeling, but hmm. And Lilo, oh, let me say this, Lilo and Stitch, oh, that movie's deep, deeper than I thought. We gotta revisit these classics, Lilo and Stitch came out like two thousand and three. Damn, that movie twenty-one years old? What? Oh, that's, well, cuz my little, my little, wait, wait, wait. Yes, because my other brother just turned twenty-one, and we call him a, well, wait, Lilo and Stitch came out in two thousand and two. Finding Nemo came out in two thousand and three, that's, oh my god, Lilo and Stitch twenty-two years old. Cuz my little, my younger brother is, was born also, he was born in two thousand and three, just turned twenty-one. Oh my god, Finding Nemo is, yes, cuz we used to call him the Nemo baby, oh my goodness, this is too much, this is too much. This is when we like Ellen DeGeneres, y'all, when she had a really great career. Oh my goodness, goodness. Wow, anyway, I just, while I'm at that age where I can start to see things. Anyway, so, yeah, Disney Plus is popping, y'all, I mean, I honestly, people be asking, what's my favorite, my favorite app, my favorite, um, subscription? I battle with different ones, so I, okay, who'd I like? I really do like Max, which I hate calling it Max, I like to call HBO Max, I really do like Max. Netflix, I kinda, eh, eh, I'm like, eh, and, you know, Netflix don't really do it for me, but I know people like that love his blind show, I don't, I don't really watch it. Um, Netflix, I mean, the good shows are starting to come off, like The Crown's off there now. I don't really know what's up with them. You know who's, who's impressing me though lately is Hulu. Hulu's been impressing me lately. Disney Plus, I just feel like I just can't, you know what, I feel like I can never, like, not, not have Disney Plus. Because as long as, you know, all the Disney classics are on there, I'm gonna always wanna watch it. And I got the whole library, because, listen, y'all, I grew up with all the VHSs and DVDs of all these Disney movies. I mean, they're all in my mom's house somewhere boxed away, and I was irked because I was like, how am I gonna watch these films? I'm not, I was never trying to buy them again and on Blu-ray or all that digital shit to pay for. So, when Disney Plus came out, it's literally my catalog of all of my Disney anime films that I no longer have the energy to get DVDs and VHSs. So, this is a godsend. I just wanna say that, because some of us was on Netflix watching some of the films, because Netflix had a couple of Disney anime films, but they didn't have the big, big hits, like, they didn't have Lion King, Beauty and the Beast, Little Mermaid. They had, like, I think at one point, Pocahontas, they had Hercules. But they were very, like, picking shoes about which Disney movies they had on their roster, it was very pick and choose. But the main classics were not really on there like that, so that used to always irk me. Um, but I digress. So, Hulu, I've been liking for a minute, because they got the bear on there, but they have the Freak Nick documentary that just dropped. I just wanna say, I was proud to not see my mother or any of my mentors on that documentary. For people that don't know what Freak Nick is, it was a very popular, very known, very popular black, um, black college party energy. It started in the eighties and it ended in ninety-nine before the turn of the twentieth century. And when we got to the first century, it ended. But this later years, it, it just got too wild, I mean, it was the Uncle Luke era, it was all that, don't stop, get it, it got a little too wild, too violent, too much. Um, I enjoyed it, overall, the documentary was fun, there was some interesting, like, cameo's from people that I was like, you weren't even around on Freak Nick, like, they had Twenty One Savage, he don't know nothing about that, but they got all these, like, Atlanta people, which, some of them made sense, like Rashida made sense, Jermaine Dupri made sense, right? But some of these people that was on there, I was like, why are you on here? That was a little interesting with the commentary, cuz I felt like they were reading off a script. But, some people were really telling their experiences and had the pictures to prove it, and I really loved that. Uh, my only critique, if there was much of the critique, was that they didn't spend enough time talking about some of the issues with sexual abuse, harassment, and some of the, you know, some of that. They did talk about a little bit, but they really did not get into it as much. And thi, this is, and I've read some articles, long form pieces, oral history articles about Freak Nick and some of the real concerns, and they kinda skimmed a little bit over there. They do discuss it to a certain degree, but they didn't go in as, as much depth as I thought they would. Cuz at a certain point, I feel like this, this was supposed to be so nostalgic, but I wish they would have done it. But maybe that's just my mo, my more general, journalistic, um, my journalistic investig, investigatory sense of me. Like, I just, you know, I, I'm into stuffs like, go a little deeper, they, they, but honestly, a lot of people don't know a lot about Freak Nick. And so, it, it, it's been many years, like, it's been, like, this would be twenty-five years since the last Freak Nick. So, there's been some time, and I do feel like a lot of people have heard of it or may have heard a reference. And so, it was a very nice surface level documentary about it. Now, there have been people that's been saying, since this, like, why is no one gonna talk about the Philly Greek picnic, which was a iconic, I wasn't around really, was I around? Not really, I was too young. But there was the, the iconic Philly Black Greek picnic, which was the Black Fraternities, the Vine Nines, um, all of them, the Alphas, the Kappa, the Deltas, the Zetas, Sigma Gamma Mu, um, Deltas, and Iotas, and Sigmas, and Zetas, and Omegas, and, you know, I think that's all of the nine, you know, but that's, you know, and Alphas, right? Uh, AKAs, you know, can't forget them. So, they were all a part of these picnics, and apparently, the, the Philadelphia shut the picnics down, they didn't last that long. But in their own right, they had their own, you know, wildness, people love it, people have thoughts about it, but they had it. And so, that was largely a moment, people like, oh, there should be a documentary about that. Who gonna do it? I always had an interest though for a long time of like, doing something like the oral history of the Philly Greek picnic, cuz I've heard so many stories about it. But, you know, it's interesting, it, it's very interesting about that moment in black Philly history, and what happened, and what, why not this, and why not that, so it's very telling. So, um, what else did I watch? Oh, my goodness, Shirley on Netflix, incredible, incredible, Regina King, y'all, I mean, can we start the Oscar campaign, or is it too lur, early? Or they're just not gonna give nobody that deserves it something, who knows? But can we start, I mean, I really, like, Regina King is a phenomenal actress. I mean, this woman has an Emmy, she has a Golden Globe, she has an Academy Award, like, I mean, she has multiple Emmys, like, she's incredible. Like, we gotta, the campaign, the campaign, what are we doing? How we gonna get her, you know, another Oscar, a lead actress Oscar, mind you. Um, but yeah, we gotta, we, she's incredible in Shirley, it's a great biopic, it's inspiring, it's fun. I really like that Netflix has been consistently giving us these really great black biopic films. Rustin was phenomenal last year, now Shirley, and I'm really happy that they're doing it on people who haven't gotten much. Like, there has not really been a major Shirley Chisholm, you know, um, document. For those who don't know, Shirley Chisholm is the first black woman to run for president, like, a major black woman to run for president. And she's one of the few black women to be elected to US Congress, she's a pioneer, she's a trailblazer, she's iconic. And she has an incredible life story, life experiences, and there was a little bit of a hint in Miss America, which I loved. That was that FX, that FX mini-series called Miss America, oh my god, that was good, and it came out during the pandemic. If you have not seen Miss Americana or Miss America, whoever, the lead actress is Cate Blanchett, she was, um, oh my goodness, she played that horrible evil woman, um, that I actually wrote about in my book, um, The Case for Cancel Culture, because this woman was an anti-feminist, she was a conservative. Um, and, um, she was just a horrible woman, um, and I wanna make sure I have her name right, um, because she was just crazy. So, this woman wanted to kill, um, she wanted to kill the, uh, Equal Rights Amendment, the ERA, which she did successfully, actually. It came by this move, this, this series came out during the pandemic, it was one of the first things I watched, um, during the pandemic. And she, she was Phyllis Shafly, which was called, AKA, the sweetheart of the silent majority. Um, during this era in the seventies, she pushed to really kill the movement. And the film is called Mrs. America, let me clarify that, it was called Mrs. America. And, um, Phyllis Shafly, um, was the lead actress, this is the woman, like, Cate Blanchett plays this anti-feminist, and she's incredible. Now, the woman in there who played, um, this incredible actress won an Emmy, um, for her performance playing, um, playing, um, Shirley Chisholm, um, and she won the supporting, best supporting actress performance. Um, and she's played in several, uh, great films, um, over the years. Um, I'm trying to remember, who was it that was in that, the cast? Um, cuz I remember this act, she's very popular, um, and I'm just not remembering her, cuz she hasn't really been in anything in a while, actually. Um, and so, I, 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 I see her face, but I don't wanna like erase her name. Um, famous black actress, um, on TV mostly, um, and she's really dope. So, oh, Uzo Abubacar, um, played Shirley Chisholm, and she won the Primetime Emmy Award for Best Supporting Actress in a Mini-Series. It was, uh, Uzo, um, Abubacar, who's been in some others, in Treatments, some other great shows. She was known for her performance in, um, Orange is the New Black. And she played the hell out that role and won some great Emmy Awards, so she's got multiple Emmys actually, so she's incredible. So, yes, she played Shirley Chisholm and won an Emmy for her part in it, but she wasn't the lead actress. But now Regina King, many years later, is now playing, um, Shirley Chisholm, she's phenomenal. Now, I must address this film, cuz you all are so petty and messy. Wasn't gonna talk about it cuz I didn't wanna talk about it, but you all was like, hey, there was this big movie that came out, and you ain't saying nothing about it. That was on purpose. So, you all wanna know what I thought about the American society of magical Negroes? Hated it, didn't like it, and clearly, nobody liked it, it flopped at the box office, the messaging, the title, the movie, it's just, ugh, missed opportunities. I feel like in the hands of better writers, it could have been something better, but it just fell flat for me. The casting, there's some good, there's some interesting moments, but just, this should have been a Netflix film. This should have been a film that we could all hate-watch or talked about or watched on Netflix. Before they have a real major cinematic release, was pretty underwhelming. So, I'm, I'm gonna be honest with you, I was not crazy about it, wasn't a fan, that's all. So, move on to music, cuz I got a lot to say about music. Cardi B is with the back-to-back slay, she just dropped another single in collaboration with Shakira, that was fire. Go Cardi, like, I just, this new era is coming, y'all, like, she's, it's happening, Joe, it's happening. Give it up, Joe, my Libra is coming through this year, okay? Like, it's happening, just, just, just letting y'all know, it's happening. So, yeah, it, it's, you know, there's a lot to, there's a lot to unpack there. Um, so, moving along, uh, I just wanna say this real quick. I have been listening to one album ridiculously, and I'm obsessed with the album. I didn't know this was gonna happen to me, cuz me and her, you know, I was feeling a little shaky about her. But this album is just taking me away, and I'm obsessed with one song, and it's me and Dr. Parks, me and Amanda love this song. The Boy Is Mine by Ariana Grande has a, has me to choke ho. The boy is mine, I can't wait to try him. Uh, listen, I just love that song, y'all. Play that song, and I'm going, I'm just going, I'm gonna rock out. I love this album, I love this Eternal Sunshine album by Ariana Grande. It is fire, it is doing what it needs to do, the cohesion, the move, the feel, I'm ro, I'm vibing with her. Oh my god, I love her, I love this album, I just really cannot get enough of this album, I'm sorry. It's, it, I, listen, I know that that might change in less than seven days, but bear with me. Right now, it's my album right now, but I know there's gonna be another album that's coming in a couple of days, that's gonna change everything for me, so, you know, it was cute while it lasted, boo boo, you had me for all of March, but you know, the end of March, coming into April, I don't know. But I just wanna just give her props. Also, to all of you normandy doubters, Normandy said, look, I may have been quiet, but dopamine albums coming soon, and she's got a new single that's dropping April twenty-sixth, which is a little long for me for a single, girl, I thought she was gonna drop the album. But she got a single coming out April twenty-sixth, I think that the plan is that, I'm gonna keep it one hundred. I feel like she was gonna drop the album much sooner. But Ariana Grande, Taylor Swift, Beyonce, in like a month's span, child, them only, only them three women have the type of following, and also Billie Eilish too. They got the kind of following, oh, Dua Lipa dropping album too, I mean, like, all the girls are dropping their albums. Some of them are dropping their albums on the same goddamn days, it's got it, the mute, listen, there was a drought in music, and now it's flooding with music, like, everybody's dropping music right now, I'm here for it. This is, this is taking me back to the early two thousand and teens and, and, and late two thousands, when artists just was just dropping albums, there was so much music to listen to, good music. And I'm, and I don't wanna jinx myself, but I feel like we're, we're having a moment right now where everybody's just dropping stuff, and ain't nobody trying to space the shit. I am excited about this era, like, I just love that there's all these albums dropping in the next couple of weeks, and I am gonna be overfilled with albums in rotation. Those were the days, see, I don't know what has happened where you had the, you know, music was so, music has been so dry in the past couple of years, that you would have only one album you could listen to over and over and over again, because nobody else had any good albums. I remember when I was young, okay, and Beyonce, Gaga, Katie, all the girls had their album, Rihanna dropped albums, and you just would play the different albums in rotation, and you would discuss the songs and debate the albums. The last couple of years, it's like one album was good that year, maybe another album, and that was it, you didn't have nothing. Even the girls who were trying to come out with stuff, Tyler's new album right now, her album is good. This is the girl, make me her, make me lose my, the water song girl, she got a cute little album that just came out, shout to her. Now, let me just say this, a lot of them songs sound like they all run together, and it is like that. But it's good music though, it sounds good, I just wanna say that. So, I don't mind the, the connectivity, uh, but that's a good album, good debut album. It is definitely an album I'll put in the car, it's giving me summer vibes, it's giving me like, put it on, let, play it out. But she got a nice little album, and she's not even like one of the big main artists, but she got a Grammy though, so, you know, I mean, I like this album. Um, I hope she gets well so she can go back on tour, but she's doing something. Meg got a concert, Meg's tour, she didn't already sold out eighty-eight percent of her tickets. Philly didn't sell it out, Madison Square Garden sold out, I was gonna sit back on it, I was like, I'll wait and see what happens. Guess not, counter sold out, but no shade. I feel like a lot of them tickets are gonna be resold, cuz that's what they be doing out here, but you know. But she's doing well, but there's a lot of artists right now that's just dropping albums, and it's so good to just listen to different people's music and not feel like you got one album, but I ain't gonna hold you, Ariana Grande's album has been on repeat, and I've been listening to people's music, but she got me. Kacey Musgraves' new album just came out, and what a return to form for her, really good album, I've given a couple of spins, and I do like Kacey Musgraves. I love her album Golden Hour, which won album of the year at the Grammys a couple of years ago. Golden album, A Golden Hour is, is, I still play songs off that album. Um, it was inspired by her ex-husband, who she's no longer with anymore, so it's kinda weird listening to it, cuz them songs, knowing that them songs is about him and how much she gave her butterflies and love and like, to find out they're not together anymore, it's kinda weird listening to them. But a lot of them songs, I think of Mr. Johnson, so it just plays differently in my ear, so that's what I kinda do. But she's so great, she's a nail, she's wonderful. Um, so, yeah, Normandy got a new single coming out April twenty-sixth, but we don't know, and hopefully it do come out April twenty-sixth, we'll see. Uh, but moving on, um, what do I wanna talk about next? Future and Drake, there might be a breakup in their little bromance. Um, Future got an album with Metro Boomin', and y'all know I love Future despite all of his lowlifesness, I'm sorry, I, I just, everybody has to have a one or two problematic phase, and he's one of them. But, you know, they say Future really can't keep a bitch, meaning that in this song, we're not talking about a woman, we're talking about a man, and the man that we're referring to as a bitch is Drake. So, apparently, there's some disses being made on this album, I've listened to it, I do feel like there is a rift in that relationship. But my good friend Joe, Mr. Hamilton, said best, our Lord and Savior can't ever lose one that he was looking to keep. God bless, let me read that again, let me read that verse in the book of Lady Davy's, chapter two, verse six. Our Lord and Savior ain't ever lose one that he was looking to keep. God bless, amen. So, that's how we feel about it, and I agree with Brother, uh, Hamilton on that point. Um, you know, can't, can't lose something you never was trying to keep, translation. Um, you know, it was, it came and it went, you know, you know how Future do, Future, he liked that, like, what happened with him and Lil Uzi Vert? Didn't they have a little Pluto album or something together? We ain't heard about them since. Future just kinda run through, you know, he kinda just moves through, you know, but this one lasted pretty long. But, you know, Drake is just, is not it. But there's a song with Kendrick Lamar, and, um, he's throwing shots at J. Cole, cuz Drake and J. Cole on the tour. Something going on with the money, something going on with the collaboration, this is getting really messy, shots are being thrown. And all I gotta say is, I'm definitely not on Drake's team, just saying, just saying. So, now moving on, I need y'all to do something for me. I need y'all to leave Beyonce the fuck alone, and let me be clear, there's always room for critique, I'm not against critique. But what has pissed me off this past week and these past couple of days is that people are so, there are some people that are so upset- and these past couple of days is that people are so, there are some people that are so obsessed with picking on Beyonce. Now, I guess we can't pick on billionaires, but just the, uh, but, just the outlandish things that has really disgusted me lately. So, again, as a critic, a professional critic, one who's gets paid that opinion, which is why I don't know why a lot of people be out here having all these goddamn opinions, they don't get paid. Child, I don't be giving my opinions for free, okay? You, look, you ain't paying for it, but somebody's paying me to give one. Some people just be out here just loud and wrong. One of the things that has annoyed me is that Beyonce's new album cover for Cowboy Carter, and even her deluxe edition, her, her special cover, has caused controversy. I just feel like she'd just be sitting back at home, just laughing at the chaos. Like, you know, you must be that bitch when you causing all this conversation. That's a verse from one of her most iconic songs, Formation. And it's just so true. This, she'd just be out here just, she don't even talk, and she posts, and people would just be out here just reading. So, the, the Cowboy Carter original poster is her on a, on a cow, on a ca- on a, uh, on a horse, holding American flag in Americana-type attire, western attire. People are like, oh, why is the American flag? Why this, why da-da-da-da? What does this mean? She just always comes like, why is that African? Okay, she's being a rodeo queen. Okay, as somebody who's a Houston Texan, who grew up in Houston, participated in rodeo, has done dairy cow judging at rodeos, who done this shit, what she is wearing is literally the same exact outfit and the American flag. All of that is what a rodeo queen wears, but for whatever reason, there's these fake-ass sociologists, supposed to be people that educated black folks, oh, he having all this, this extra narrative, and I'm like, yo, she's paying homage to the Texas rodeo. Literally, she dropped it ten days before. It, it, it's in cohesion with the Houston livestock show rodeo, which is currently happening. Sometimes it can be that simple. Sometimes y'all making Beyonce like she's a PhD supernova Jedi. Sometimes Beyonce is just paying a little bit of homage and just being simple with it. It don't gotta be that motherfucking deep. I don't know why y'all make Beyonce, like, I just, uh, it's, yes, she's brilliant, but she's also not that cryptic. But people just wanna project a lot of thoughts. If you don't like her, just say you don't like her. The end, okay? Like, period. I, I, sometimes I get over some of this obsession. And, um, some of the ways that people will say stuff, I just get so annoyed with the misinformation and the consistent, just dumb shit that people say, like, at a certain point. So one example was when she released the deluxe edition, um, cover, there's a picture of her with the braids coming down with the barrettes in the, in the braids on her face. And Erykah Badu got her ass on Twitter, li- on, on social, trying to act like, you know, Beyonce stole this from her look away cuz she didn't did it. Child, Beyonce been doing that look. This is not new. You just been in Chewbacca's cave somewhere, you know, hidden. But Beyonce been doing this aesthetic in videos. Solange has too, and before her, it was a man named Rick James that did the look. This is not a new look. But people just always like to come out of Chewbacca's cave and bully and fuck with this woman, like, leave it the fuck alone. And Erykah Badu did this the last time Beyonce had to roll out. Like, what's the obsession? You know what I think it is, is we out here giving conspiracy theories. Where's Erykah Badu from? Dallas. And where is Beyonce from? Houston. And as a Houston bitch, I will tell you them Dallas bitches from D-Town always hate them H-Town. So that's how I fucking feel. I think this is some D-Town, H-Town beef, and y'all who ain't from Texas go sit back down. That's what I think this is. I think Erykah wanted to be the only one from Texas. She was holding down Texas, and then all of a sudden, this H-Town hottie, right? Or, well, some people gonna say H-Town, the new term she using in her song, um, you know, uh, you know, they, they might go there with it. Uh, but like, you know, I just feel like it's just always something that people just always gotta find something new to say. And it's just like, like, shut up. And shout out to her, Beyonce's team, um, for basically throwing they show digs and just letting people, reminding people that every time y'all do this stunt, it don't, it don't work. It don't work, you know, um. You know, Beyonce is having fun. You know, I think so. Another interesting theory that I had, um, you know, because, you know, look, Beyonce said, listen, I'm gonna be an H-Town hussy, okay? But one other theory I have about Beyonce's album, so she recently told her story that this ain't a country album, this is a Beyonce album, which I really did like that she said. Um, it's coming out this Friday, the twenty-ninth of March. She gonna end March in a bang, like she ended Black History Month in a bang. But Beyonce said that she had an experience in country music that, you know, made it, made her feel like she was not welcomed. And that stuck with her and made her wanna do this album. What's interesting was, we find out from a producer, um, that this album was made before Renaissance, but she decided to Renaissance first and drop this later, her mind. Um, but what's interesting about it is, is that people have said that they believe it was the, uh, CMT Awards, the Country Music TV Awards, when she performed with Dixie Chicks, and there was a lot of reports that there was a lot of disrespect and rudeness from Beyonce performing. And I was doing Lemonade when she performed Daddy Issues back in twenty sixteen, um, at that award show. And there's a big old controversy that Beyonce came to show, but the ratings had went up when Beyonce showed up, so, you know, value. Um, but there was a lot of controversy, so people, she never named what it was, but people feel like that's what it was. I wonder, and I do think this, that Beyonce went this direction to pr- to, to make them people feel the discomfort she had as a black woman in country by people who don't remember that black people was a part of the origins of country music, okay? And for these white people who once again appropriated this music to look at her like she doesn't belong, she's a part of a growing trend of these people that's reclaiming, okay? Not, not, not redefining, cuz Beyonce's not the first, and she's not saying she's the first. But she is having her own reclamation with this music and what this genre means to her, and so now they're uncomfortable. Well, guess what? You're gonna feel the uncomfort and discomfort that Beyonce felt when you did what you did. And I think that is subversively interesting to me that she went this direction. So, I'm excited to hear Cowboy Carter. So far, so good. I like the first two singles so far, and, um, Texas Hold'em has definitely grown on me. Um, so I like the album. I'm looking forward to hearing it. I'm looking forward to giving my review next week, and I'm hyped. But, as a good friend, okay, the, the one thing, and I hope he's listening, the one piece of music that I've been waiting to hear for this entire spring and on April twenty-ninth. I'm gonna listen to it before I listen to Beyonce's album, cuz that's what real stans do. I am looking forward to hearing "Home" by my bestie Jamarcus Henderson on all streaming platforms, his new single for his upcoming album, which is dropping in April, okay? Next month, at the end of next month, his new album is dropping, and we're gonna do a whole album review on that, and I'm super excited. But he is back with new music. He's been working on this for, for several months. He's got a cohesive project. He's got visuals. It's about to blow. I am so excited. I'm so happy for him. And his new single is called "Home," and it is dropping this Friday, April twenty-ninth, on all streaming platforms. So before you listen to, you know, the H-Town, you know, hussy known as Beyonce, you could also listen to another H-Town who's doing his thing. Support black music, local music, career music. It's, 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 it's going down. He's got producers. He's really put his foot into making this project work. There's gonna be some other events coming. Stay tuned, but I'm super excited for my bestie who's got a new single coming out, March twenty-ninth. I've been dropping it. It's got the Matrix aesthetic. If y'all been following his aesthetic on, on, on my, I've been showing on my page, but Jamarcus Henderson on all streaming platforms, his new single is dropping. It's called "Home." I have not heard it yet. I purposely did not. I wanna be surprised, but in the past, he would let me listen to his products before they come out. But I really, as a fan and as a friend, as a bestie, wanna hear it, and it's a good way for us to get together, because I have been on hiatus, Lit Brothers, I had some stuff going on, and I can finally tell you what it is in the next couple of minutes. But I just wanna say that we're gonna get together on Friday. We're gonna do a good old happy hour. Lit Brothers are back. We're gonna celebrate this new Beyonce album, but we're gonna celebrate Jamarcus's new single, "Home." And so we're all coming together. It's gonna be super exciting. So, cannot wait for that. Now, with TV, I wanna just make sure for people who did not know, that show that I'm talking about with Kate Winslet on HBO Max, or I'm sorry, Max, it's called "The Regime," not "The Dictator," but she plays a dictator, but the show is called "The Regime." So if you're looking on Max, do not put in "The Dictator," put in "The Regime," or just put in Kate Winslet's name, Kate Winslet. And it will come up. It is a great series. I just wanna make sure I let y'all know that. So, the big show I've been excited about watching just premiered, season two premiered on Sunday. This is Summer House Martha's Vineyard. It is back, y'all. Yes, my, my fave. Preston Mitchum, the cast is back. Now, Silas, the husband to Jasmine, the one that was a little, you know, a little heated a lot, he is not on the show this season. He's got military duties and things, so he's not on the show. But the first season premiere of season two was fire. And, you know, as somebody who now goes to Martha's Vineyard, I'm like, looking at the scenery, looking at stuff. Fun fact, for those who watched that first episode, you know that little boat, that little, little yacht thing they're on? I was on that yacht, um, on that particular yacht that they were on. I was on that when I went to the vineyard last summer. Look at me sound like some, I be cracking myself up. What does that even mean, Ernest? Okay, listen, like my girl Glorilla said, at the end of the day, the day gotta end, period. Um, I use that context, but let me just, okay, pause, since we're talking about media. What the, what, what, okay, so Glorilla is a rapper. She's very famous. She loves to talk about days and tomorrow and yesterday and shit. It's just, her and time and days, she just likes that a lot. Just interesting. But she went to the White House recently. She met President Biden. Um, she saw some kids. It was a great little photo op. She was on Instagram. It was a big ol' thing. Well, she was on Laura Coats from CNN, which by the way, I've been watching a lot of CNN, but I only been watching Laura Coats. I really like this black woman who hosts late night CNN. Laura Coats, I really like her. I used to like Abby, I mean, I almost say I used to like Abby. I still like Abby, Abby Phillip, but not to compare people, but I just like Laura Coats. I just really, really like Laura Coats. I like the way she hosts the show. I like the way she take control of her show from crazy guests that come on and acting a little weird and disrespectful. I just find her to be, be the right level of, of insight, intellect, energy, personality, and, and just some, just a real closeness. She's been really doing a lot of good stuff. Shout out Philly. She's been doing this really cool, like, segments on show where she's doing these great stories about men, black men specifically, notably, that's been incarcerated for crimes they didn't co- commit and how they're re-entering society. And she's been doing, she did like two of them in the past two weeks, and they've just been fascinating. But her show, which is really good, it's just, I really do like watching her. So, what I was gonna say, I'm just like, I'm just like, I just be digressing. So, I say all this because, um, Glorilla was on the show last week, and she was a special guest, and, and Laura Coats be getting, like, Laura Coats be really getting, you know, she just be knowing where to get people. So she had Glorilla on there, but Glorilla was not trying to be political, I guess, trying to run away from the conversation around Biden, and just trying to just be like, I met the president, I was surprised, my family was happy. But she didn't really wanna like say who she was gonna vote for, who she was supporting, and, and it's really weird because it's like Sexy Red on the other end is like doing all this Trump stuff. I just don't know what's going on with the rappers. I don't, ugh. It's just, ugh, it's, it's, it's gotten to the female rapper world, like Cardi B. We come, you know, tap in, baby, because Cardi B knows her shit. Now, Cardi B can, you know, she's been politically minded and active, and she's done talked to Bernie Sanders and stuff, like, we need you to tap in because I don't know what the young girls are doing, but they just not, they're not impressing me. But Glorilla dodged it and then kinda did this iconic question. She said, well, at the end of the day, they gotta end, and I was like, okay, that was dumb, but that is funny. And I'm, I'm here for, I'm here for the shenanigans. So, that's where I was getting at with that. But Martha's Vineyard, um, it's good. DVR it, watch this show. It's a great show. Now, the moment you all been waiting for, I have, um, an announcement to make. So, last episode, many of you all said I left you all on a cliffhanger. And I was in a position where I really could not share this news with you all, because I was, you know, I have to respect, you know, protocol and things. But I wanna tell you all this. Now, many of you all are gonna listen to this show. You know, we're at the, what, two hours or whatever this show, this episode, and it might be before noon on Monday. So I wanna make a little, you know, pinky promise amongst us as my top early listeners. See, this is why you wanna listen to Ernesty Speakey, be one of the first to listen to it, because I'm about to make a really big announcement. So, if you listen to this and finish this episode before noon on Monday, March twenty-fifth, please do not say anything to everybody named Mama. Don't post on my wall. You can DM me privately or text me privately. You got my number. But don't post it out. I have to announce it at noon Eastern Standard Time on Monday, March twenty-fifth. And I would like for you not to tell anybody, if you know people that know me. I kinda wanna let it be natural, but if you listen to my podcast, I've always promised you that I would try to give you all the inside scoop, but it's just a scoop when I can. So, I am going to tell you all, some of you all that's listening to this that know me very well, you're gonna have your mouth on the floor and say, what? I know. So here I go. I'm honored to finally announce I'm a proud brother of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the first black intercolleg- intercollegiate Greek-letter fraternity in America. Um, I crossed on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, entering the foe by the way of the mighty Ro chapter. So I'm a member of the, the Ro chapter, which is an alumni chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. So, in Alpha and many other Divine Nine, so the Divine Nine is the, the, the nine black Greek-letter organizations um, in America. Um, there's, there's, uh, five fraternities and nine sororities. Um, and Alpha is the first black fraternity of its kind, um, within the Divine Nine. The first sorority and the first of the Divine Nine is Alpha Kappa Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, First Fam, as we would say as alphas. Um, they are, uh, the first, the AKAs. So, you know, I, you know, I wanna, um, name the fraternities of, of the Divine Nine, cuz I, I definitely, people will say, well, who are they? What are they? Yada, yada, yada. Um, so, they are, eh, Alpha, uh, I mean, sorry, uh, AKAs, uh, Delta Sigma Theta, Zeta Phi Beta, the Zetas, the Deltas, the Delta Sigma Theta, the AKAs is the AKAs, Sigma Gamma Ro, which is a sorority. Those are all the four sororities. The fraternities is Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, the alphas. Omega Phi, uh, Psi Phi, um, which is Omegas, Kappa Alpha Psi, which is the Kappas, Phi Beta Sigma, which is known as the Sigmas, and, um, who else? I'm joking. Uh, and last but not least, um, the Iodas, um, and they're the, the last, um, you know, uh, Divine Nine fraternity, um, which is Iota Phi Theta. Um, is, is it Iota Phi Theta, which is Iotas. Um, and, and that is the Divine Nine. So, all of those groups have what was called, um, college chapters, which is basically people that, you know, um, get initiated in college, but they also have alumni chapters, which are for adults who've graduated with a college degree and get initiated, um, after college. So I'm a member of the Alumni Chapter, which is what they call it, which I am a full dues-paying Alpha. There's no difference as far as influence and power, except that, you know, Alumni Chapter are not students. They're in the adult world, and when many people from the college, um, you know, fraternity level graduate, they join the Alumni Chapters, which is basically the adult, you know, fixa- you know, uh, situation and structure. So, they end up joining us. So a lot of people who are in college that got initiated in college, they join the Alumni Chapters. And then many people, um, who did not join in college will then become, will then get initiated and go through a process then. So, um, I went through a process for the last several weeks, and so a lot of you all were like, you know, you know, you know, we haven't seen you as much, or why you've been kinda not going out? Cuz I've been focused in learning about the organization and connecting and networking and, and, and just really getting invested. Um, and it was an incredible experience, um, a journey, and I, I'm, you know, this is, this is, this is great. Um, so I crossed the burning sands with twelve incredible men. Um, it's thirteen of us on the line. I'm number ten um, on the line. So the line is set up by who's the shortest and the tallest, so I'm number ten. Um, you know, I'm a little tall, and our line name is the Thirteen Ferals of Fire and Ice. My name on the line is the Scribe. Get it? So I'm the Scribe. Uh, that's the name that was given to me, and, um, it was a journey. You know, we all possessed and gained, um, we all had a lot of unique qualities. The, the people in my line are incredible. One of them is a CEO of, um, of, uh, Boys Latin. Um, and he has a doctor, and he's incredible. Another guy's in a PhD pro- a dual, a joint PhD, he's in a dual PhD program at Penn, which is incredible. And he's a genius, and he's really dope. He is the deuce of the line. Um, a lot of them are teachers, educators, entrepreneurs, but they're some very intelligent black men, and our ages range. So I'm the third youngest on the line at thirty-two, but the other two in front of me are, are twenty-seven. They both are twenty-seven years old. And then the oldest person on my line is eighty-one years old, and he- And then the oldest person on my line is 81 years old and he is actually my back. He's number 11 and he's 81 years old. Um, but his two sons are alphas and it's a family thing for them. So it was, it was, it was a a an incredible experience. Um, my sponsor is a man who I've known since I was 18 years old. Um, in Philadelphia, my first candidate in Philadelphia, his name is, well, I call him now Brother Reverend William Gibson. Who was the chaplain at Princeton University. Now he is a major faculty of University of Pennsylvania. He's also was the, one of the faculty leaders in the DuBois College House. Who uh W E B DuBois is also an Alpha. And he was the namesake of the house and, you know. I'm super excited because uh Brother Gibson is a member of the Row chapter and he was my sponsor and um. Was my big mentor uh through this entire experience. So it's just a full circle moment for me for so many reasons. Um, shout out to my dean, um, the assistant deans, my sponsor, my recommender, the brothers of Row, all those people who helped in this process. Um, and I and I gotta say that to those who went to Penn with me. You all probably know why this is a pretty big damn deal. Um, what I will say. Um, is don't let anyone tell you when, how and where a chapter in your story begins, continues and ends. You can be who you truly are, you can stay true to your principles and you can arrive at where you're supposed to be on your own terms. Some things are debatable while others are birthright. And I believe that this is something, that's my birthright. This is something that for a long time I wanted. And sometimes you might think a dream is deferred, but it can be delayed. And things always happen when it's supposed to happen. Um, this time in my life, it just makes so much sense. It feels perfect. It was with the right people. I have a a a a large profound respect for the maturity. And the wisdom in the inclusion of the people that I crossed with and I was a part of this process with. Just the level of progress and just, I just, it 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 it's just an inexplicably, it's inexplicable experience. And it just was just great. And it's just sometimes, you know, you could just be, and I'm I'm just. I just, I could just, I know Amanda, Nina, Samantha, Abel, my goodness, are like listens, is like. Um, but they know, right? They know. Um. I would just say that. There just takes a level of, um, you just wanna be, you just, just things happen when they're supposed to happen. And you should just let no one define anything for you that's bigger than yourself and them. And I'm just happy that I gave this a second chance, that I gave this a second consideration. And then I did it with people that I respected, that respected me. And that really just made me realize that there's a bigger mission. That this work is bigger than personalities and egos and the immaturity, you know? I said something a little earlier on social media and I'm just gonna, look, I'm gonna always have the last laugh. Whether it is 12 days later, 12 weeks later, 12 months later, and in some cases, 12 years later. Cause that's what Libras do. We gonna, we gonna, we go, we gonna finish what we started. But I wanna tell you something even funnier, a little unique, is that the number seven, I always say comes in in my life in so many different ways. So on my ring, I've had, you know, my ring has seven diamond jewels, studs in my ring. And those seven, that's number seven, you know, it stands for completion. It was seven years to when, once, you know. I came out and Mr. Johnson proposed to me. But it also represents the seven years between the time in which Mr. Johnson and I became an official couple to the year we got married. This entire time, I did not know until I crossed, but during my process. That in our organization, we have an Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, we have seven founders that we call the Seven Jewels. I'm gonna leave it there. I just, and and and. They, they started an Ivy League school at Cornell University in Ithaca, New York. The college house I lived in for all four years was named after an Alpha. The man who oversaw the house and the programming was an Alpha and would years later. Become my sponsor to get into this fraternity. I I just lean into the universe of divine intervention, that nothing is a coincidence, that the universe works in mysterious ways. And. That's, that's just where I'm at. I'm just like. It's just, it it it's just interwoven. And like another funny thing, which my mother never told me so recently. Is that she was an Alpha Phi Alpha sweetheart in college. So you know, eh, if there was ever gonna be one I would ever done, I guess it was always written in the stars. I did it. Never say never. And um, there's more to come, um, more things to come, but I'm just super excited. I'm happy I can finally tell you all. Yes, that might be why I was losing some weight, because I wasn't really outgoing to restaurants and shit, so you know, I was keeping it cute and keeping it tight. Go still, I learned some things, you know, I definitely, you know, dieting, I didn't diet, but I was, just the way I was eating, it was interesting, you know, adapting new. Types of eating habits and things. I must say that I'm gonna definitely incorporate more of that into my lifestyle just in general, cause I had, I hadn't been going out. Um, because I was, you know, too busy just resting and doing work and things, but definitely gonna incorporate some of that in my um, my regimen in general. But I'm super excited. Um, I just cannot wait until everybody finds out, which will be very soon, will be Monday at noon. Um, but it's, it's gonna be very interesting to see just the reactions and I'm just excited about these new opportunities. Um, these new networks of people I'm gonna be able to meet and just being a part of just black history and just, just all that great stuff. So I'm just super happy. So the coolest things too, I just, oh my goodness, here I go, being being, here I go, being a Neo. Um. You know. I love being a part of first, like Alpha Phi uh Fraternity Incorporated is the first black, you know, Greek letter fraternity in America. Also Row, the Row chapter specifically, is the only single letter, Greek letter. Um, I um alumni chapter within Alpha Phi. There's many um alumni chapters within Alpha Phi fraternity. But we are Row is the only single leather, le- uh letter. So you know, this is another cool fact. So as always, be well and be best.
Earnestly Speaking is recorded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and can be found on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts. To stay up to date with the latest on the show, follow me on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram at Mr. Ernest Owens. Use the hashtag Earnestly Speaking to tell me what you thought about this episode and check out my website at earnestowens.com.